Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for today, December 2nd. It is 9:07 a.m. Madam Clerk, if you can take us to the roll call.
President.
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 Before we go on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask Commissioner Dudon to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. But also, I would like a moment of silence for one of our employees, Berna Hadameo. Her mother, Virginia Hadameo, passed away recently. And I know that we've had a lot of family, county family, whose own family members have passed on, have been ill, or other things have happened in their households. And so, let us keep them in our prayers and offer a moment of silence as well. Mr. Dudon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dudon.
Thank you, Chairman.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Staff Commissioners, I believe there were a couple of items. The first one, on Presentations, Item 7A. I'm not sure if Mr. Ralph Fahill is going to be present. The chairman of the New Mexico Aseca Commission Association is going to be present here today. I believe we do have William Gonzalez and Mary Mascareñas, who are supposed to be in his place to make that presentation here in a few minutes. That's the only change, right, Mr. Chuleta?
As far as I know, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Someone to approve the agenda.
Okay. And we also, Commissioners, have, I believe, an introduction to our new county, to another...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to introduce to the Chair and to the Commission members our new Assistant County Attorney, Quayla Robinson.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, at the risk of embarrassing Quayla, I am just extremely pleased that she's here. Her recommendations from her colleagues, both in government and in her private practice, were just uniformly glowing, and I have very high expectations for her contribution to the county.
Awesome.
I'm proud to working with all of you.
Likewise, and welcome.
Okay.
Someone to approve the agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. I would like to welcome our Commissioner-elect, Mr. Fambro, and I believe you're the only one in the audience today, our Town of Taos Councilor, Mr. Fritzhan. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. And our Sheriff, Miguel Romelo, in the back. Welcome. We'll move on then to Citizen Concerns. Anyone who wishes to speak, Ms. Abeta, welcome. I believe the last time I saw you, I was...
Well, I can see that.
I'm doing a lot better. Thank you to your staff.
Good, good, good. Okay, just a real quick update. First of all, I want everybody to meet Cindy Bradley. She is our interim CEO at the hospital. She started yesterday, and we're excited to have her. She has a lot of experience with interim positions, and so, there's some quick things we need to address quickly, and I know that she'll get on them. We also have made a job offer for our Human Resource Officer, and we will be just, you know, letting you all know who that is at our next meeting, and we just have to do all the preliminary stuff that has to happen. So, that's happened. Also, our ED assessment from the UNM Hospital Group is here assessing our emergency room. We are excited about that. We really believe that we'll have some efficiency improvement opportunities, and we look forward to that kind of thing. So, I think that's probably it. Any questions that any of you might have?
Just welcome to Ms. Bradley. Welcome to Taos. I don't know if you want a few moments to say something.
Just by way of introduction, I was the CEO at a hospital in North Platte, Nebraska for about 22 years. About six years, I moved home to Oklahoma.
Just so that we can get it on the record, if we could, ask you to speak into the mic. Thank you.
About six years ago, I moved home to Oklahoma to be closer to family, and I just do interim work now. And I think this is my fifth interim job, and I really enjoy it and very happy to be in Taos. I do hope it's a short-term assignment because I'm anxious for the hospital to have a permanent CEO, but I really am happy to be here and look forward to working with you.
Very good. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else under Citizen Concerns? Really? No one?
Doing good.
We're doing good. Okay. We'll move on to Item 6. Minutes, there are four sets. First one is Item A, November 4th, 2014, regular meeting. Commissioners, someone to approve?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item B, November 7th, regular meeting.
Someone, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. November 18th, 2014, regular meeting.
Someone, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. October 21st, 2014, regular meeting.
Someone, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on to Item 7, Presentations. Presentation regarding some concerns of the proposed expansion of the Pecos Wilderness Area. Mr. Ralph Fahill or William Gonzalez, Mary Mascareñas, are you present? If not, is there a motion to table?
Someone to table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yes. She just walked in.
Okay.
I resent my motion.
Okay.
Send my second.
Okay. So, Ms. Mascareñas, you walked in almost on time. Good morning and welcome.
Sorry I'm late. I was taking the applications for Taos v. Taos to the other side, but I was rushing and not breaking the law. Anyway, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let me take a deep breath.
We do have a letter from you, I believe, that you prepared. You're with the New Mexico Aseca Commissioners?
Yes. My name is Mary Trujillo Mascareñas, and I am the Vice Chair of the New Mexico Aseca Commission, and I have been asked to come this morning before you and address you with a big concern that we have. Mr. William Gonzalez from Las Vegas was supposed to be here, but they're having a hearing on policy and water issues, so he couldn't be here from Las Vegas. So, the New Mexico Aseca Commission feels it is imperative that many factors be looked at in regards to this expansion and the impact it will have on Asecas. Some of the factors one can look at are: Number one, forest restoration has been a problem with the existing management. This management of lands has proven to be difficult to maintain with a shortage of staff from the U.S. Forest Service to responsibly take care of the lands. Number two, wilderness designation carries many limiting conditions that formally impact traditional uses in New Mexico and especially in Taos County. For example, Asecas could be forced to pay more for repairs and improvements due to limiting use of mechanical means to make improvements or do maintenance. Catastrophic fires have destroyed watersheds and impacted our Asecas, number three. Number four, watersheds and aquifers are impacted by the overgrowth that exists in our forests today. Number five, in 2012, Alamo Gordo was awarded a $6 million grant from FEMA to remove silt from one of their lakes that was impacted by the Little Bear Fire. They have been unable to come up with the matching funds required. Consequently, two years later, that work has not been done. Number six, Asecas are currently having a hard time with the U.S. Forest Service in securing permits to do the work needed to improve the Aseca infrastructure. This is within the boundaries of the forest, and it is important to note that Asecas governance predates the Forest Service. In summary, we can all learn from the experience of the Little Bear Fire in Lincoln County. Over 250 homes were destroyed in the county due to overgrowth. Watersheds were damaged, and they continue to be impacted when rains come and flood their lands. Commissioner of Lincoln County and New Mexico Aseca Commissioner Jackie Powell reminds us, do we have the funding to fix damaged roads with flooding, and then what impact it's going to have on the road maintenance budget? The economy of the county will also be impacted because people who hike will not go to places that have been destroyed by fire. We have noticed that in our county, Jackie says. Let's look at the environment science that our ancestors utilized to maintain healthy forests, watersheds, and Asecas. And I'd just like to add that we had a meeting in Vadito several years ago, who Mr. John Olivas was kind of heading it, and another person from Taos County. I forgot his name right now. But anyway, they did address the wilderness in the Pecos, and they gave a very nice presentation. Our people turned it down. We were about maybe 50 to 70 people there that day from all around, and specifically, I remember Governor Jerry Naylor from the Pecoris Pueblo. He reminded us that we want to have the forest area to benefit our locals, not to think of benefiting the tourists, but of protecting what our locals have. The Asecas are the oldest form of government, and all the commissions around there, we are nine communities, and every commission has their cleaning date every spring. We, Iniano and Chamisal and Ojito, wanted to fix a pit water gate at the Santa Barbara River several years ago. Because of policies that the Forest Service had, we were not able to do that when we wanted and when we had the money together. So, it took several years later and much more money to be able to put a new water gate at the Santa Barbara River. I know that Avaya and Ojos Arco, I believe, also had trouble, and they could not put machinery in there, and there's times when Asecas need more than a shovel and manpower, and that cannot be done in areas that are declared wilderness. We want to protect what our ancestors left us. We want to protect our Asecas. We want to protect the mountains, but we don't want to be shut out of that. And that is a no-no for Taos County, for our area, maybe others like it, and it helps them in some area, but not in the southern part of Taos County. That is not for us. And I'll tell you, the people were very adamant at those meetings. They had several meetings before and after, but that was the main one I remember, from Jerry Naylor, Governor Jerry Naylor at the time specifically, plus other leaders in the community. There was Ambos Mascareñas, who was a leader. There was Clarence Cordova. There was Charlie Gonzalez and other people that were there. Lloyd Belander, Lloyd Belander was with us. He was always a leader in our area. All of these people said no. And I was given the chance, I was told that, you know, help him out and I could get a trip to Washington. I said, "Hi, that sounds good." But I've been there, so I said, "I don't need that, but if I would go, I would go to something for something I would believe, I would truly believe." I believe in Asecas. I believe in irrigation. I believe in our people, and I believe that we should have representatives that stand up for us and think of the impact it will have in the future for all people. So, I come before you to ask you not to support this resolution. And this comes from the New Mexico Aseca Commission comprised of nine members and from different parts of the state, and also, I'm speaking on behalf of the people in our area in the southern part of the county, because we've had meetings, we've made decisions, and we come before you to let you know what they are. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions that I might answer?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you, Mrs. Mascareñas, for coming up today. I know we were, I was a strong advocate when we went to DC on the Rio Grande del Norte, and we did touch on, you know, wood gathering being one of them. You know, this is our culture. That's what we do.
That's right.
You know, the veterans, they need a place where they can have peace, you know, just go sit down and forget the war, you know?
That's right.
They went through a lot. And I just want to thank you for coming in today. This is our culture, you know? This is our terreno.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
And that's why we want to keep it as it is, so we can continue to use what we have as is, not chase us out, because that's the fear that our people have. And they have spoken, and they have said that they know that even the Forest Service itself is very restrictive. Like I said, we had to wait about two and a half years to start our project in the Santa Barbara River. We worked with it. We did it at last with thousands of dollars more of cost. And so, we don't want to go through that, the FEMA process and all this that we have to go through, because that takes a long time, and it does not help us. People are used to working labor. They're used to taking their machinery and doing the work, and we are quite restricted in that, although it can be done when it is approved with a lot of conditions.
And Mrs. Mascareñas, I know I've been a strong advocate to the Forest Service on, you know, bringing back, we had the Quest of Cubs years back. You know, something there went wrong, but we're still paying for it, you know? And now with this 300 jobs, it just got, people got laid off at the mine, you know, how can we not bring this back to protect our forests, you know, put them to work? You know, they say there's no money out there, but yet, we're having fires, you know? It's devastating. You know, I wish we could go out and clean up our forest and let the people get the wood for heat, you know?
That's right. I think that's what a lot of people say, that, you know, if the forest would let them go in, they could go in and clean out what is dead wood and prevent forest fires. And I guess, in the past, they say forest fires have helped in some areas, which might be true, I'm not against that, but we need our people to take care of what has traditionally been used by them. We need that too. We need direction there too. But that's why I'm here, because we feel for our people who make their livelihoods, you know, from water coming out of the Asecas, for the animals that are fed from there, because all the areas, Commissioners, cannot go in and fix things that have to be done if they don't get permission, if they don't get all kinds of papers settled. And so, we wait and wait, and then by the time, the time that we can do the work, we don't have enough money. So then, we have to go out begging again or trying to get people organized to see how we can get the money to fix it. So, thanks to God that we did get sufficient money, and we especially thank Representative Ben Luhann, who even though wasn't a representative, helped us with money so we could finish our comp. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have Commissioner Blankenhorn, and then we'll move on to the audience.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. Thanks for coming. All of, my understanding is that the land under the resolution, all of it's been roadless since 1981. And I wondered if the Aseca Commission had any particular plans or areas where you thought that roads should be installed?
Well, I don't think, we've had that time since notices are very short to know, but I think maybe we can do it, you know? Don't accept today anything, and maybe we can work on that and ask the state water engineer for help, and maybe we could do something like that.
When you have to get the FEMA permit to make repairs on the Aseca, that isn't in the same property, though, right?
No, it's not in the same area. The people who spoke for that area were people from Mora, people from Vadito, Placita, Pecoris, and Rio Lucio. I think there was, you know, that affects them.
Yeah. Well, my concern is that New Mexico only has 2% of its public lands as wilderness, and once you allow roads to go in, it changes forever. It's no longer wilderness. So, this is included in the 2%. This is not an expansion of any property that has not been roadless for 30-some years. And so, I'm inclined to support the resolution because of that, because I just want to make sure that the 2% that we have that's wilderness is kept that way. And...
And I can't agree with you now, because I don't know, but people who have been in the mountains and lived the life by going there constantly and all, have voiced their opinion and have said that they don't want this. So, I'm not that much of a goer up there on horses and all. If I would go, I would go in a vehicle or a four-wheeler, I guess, but I can't tell you that because I haven't seen it, but there's a lot of people who have gone there, and they can go in and out without permission. I know they say that once it's wilderness, that there's a lot more restrictions. And I'm here to voice the opinion of my people. Thank you.
Sir, come forward. State your name for the record. Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Carlos Salazar. I'm an Aseca member of the New Mexico Aseca Association, but I'm also president of Northern New Mexico Stockman's Association. And here in this discussion this morning, most of these are proposed expansions for wilderness, national monuments, whatever you want to call it. Most of this comes from people from the outside. It's not here from the, it's not the local people that are pushing such expansions. It's, I know we're going to get into discussion of this Rio Hondo Columbine, and that's kind of the same thing, but I'll talk about that later if given the opportunity. But going back to the Aseca issue, and what she said, the Forest Service as it is right now makes it very difficult for people to even get access to do operation and maintenance on most of the diversions, including the Asecas, the Forest Service. And I'm going to say they don't recognize, like she said, the rights that people have. Asecas have been here way, way before these agencies were ever even created or perhaps even thought of. Now, you go to these agencies, I mean, sometimes you take a year before you get authorization to do any work. That's a year that people lose out on maybe putting enough water in their ditches. The other thing I want to say about this proposed expansion, most of these wilderness designations, national monuments, they do not help the economy with jobs or anything like that. Prime example is the Bandelier National Monument. Where do you see, what the intent there with the legislatures that we'd have hunting, there may be some fishing and some of those other public uses. None of them exist today. Same thing is happening with Avaya Escaldera. It's not going to, they're proposing not to make, turn it and give it to the national park and let them manage it as a national park. What does that do? That eliminates grazing, livestock grazing, it eliminates hunting, fishing. That's what we're, I think what she's talking about here this morning is that when you do a wilderness expansion designation, national monument, whatever it is, all these uses that we're accustomed to here, all those traditional historical uses go by the wayside. The intent of the legislation on paper sounds good, but what happens afterwards is the danger. If you're going to do anything on this wilderness, get it in writing. It has to be specifically done in writing. Every wish that the Asecas, the people that use the, get it in writing and make sure it happens in the legislation. I'll use one example, the Rio Grande del Norte regarding livestock grazing. That was a historical use, except in the legislation, we tried to put grazing on equal footing with all the other uses. That did not happen. They let the BLM dictate how livestock grazing is going to occur. That shouldn't be the way it was. Several groups, including stockmen, New Mexico cattle growers, we all wrote to the Congressmen, "Put this legislation to protect livestock grazing and put it on equal footing with all the other uses." Then, we have something to stand on. The other way, we don't. I'm with the Aseca people. I don't like wilderness designation. I don't like national monuments because they do nothing for the economy. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with you. I'm in favor of trying to streamline those FEMA processes for those areas where there's already roads, and the Aseca Association needs to get into those areas to work on their systems. But again, this is an area that has been roadless for 33 years, and so, it just has been preserved and hasn't been in use for firewood gathering by trucks, obviously. There's livestock, there's provisions for use of livestock grazing, but, you know, whether there's roads or whether there's not roads is such a big issue, and again, there's so little of our land left in New Mexico that doesn't have roads. I think that's the purpose of the resolution. But I agree with you on those FEMA processes. They're way too burdensome. So, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and then, so, the problem that I see with wilderness designations and all this and that is that there's no management. It's just like a person, any one of it, I could use myself as an example. When there's no management, there's no thinning, there's no logging, what happens to the forest? It's like me, if I don't take a bath for a week, for 30 days, two months, six months, what am I going to look like? That's the same thing that happens with wilderness. There is no management, and because there is no management, the only thing that's going to manage that particular piece of wilderness is fire. Fire is catastrophic. The aftermath of these wildfires is just tremendous. All the diversions that we have, and we've seen it, we've experienced it off the Hemis Mountains, here in Nambé Pueblo, that reservoir, it's silting in because of the wilderness that sits right above the tribal land. They couldn't go in there and put the fire out, so what happened? You get a big rainstorm, a one-inch rain, it's silted at least 20% of that reservoir just in one flood event. I don't know where it's at right now. What I'm saying is because there is no management, the aftermath is the danger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I know that there is a resolution with regards to this particular subject, and that's Item 9A, and I was wondering if you all wanted to set a motion to... And I was wondering if you all wanted to set a motion to bring that up at this point, so that we can have the discussion all at once? Or do you want to wait until later on in the meeting?
I think it's a good idea, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to amend the agenda accordingly.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Chaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Chaffey?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and this is item nine A, under Resolutions and Ordinances, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Approval of Resolution Number Two Thousand Fourteen dash fifty-two, Resolution Supporting the Designation of Wilderness in Special Management Areas for the Inventory Roadless Area Adjacent to the Pecos Wilderness. And we do have presenting today as well, on behalf of this, is Carol Johnson, Max Trujillo, and Arturo Sandoval, from the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance. So I know that Carol and Arturo are in the, Mr. Trujillo are in the audience, and so welcome as well. Feel free to come up at any time to make your presentation as to why we should adopt this ordinance. Commissioners, any thoughts? Okay. State your name for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm Max Trujillo, and I am with the New Mexico Wildlife Federation, not with the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance, but we do work in coalition with, with that organization as well, on some of these public lands protections issues. And I'd like to address Mrs. Trujillo's and Mr. Salazad's concerns. First off, the Pico Riz Pueblo Governor, Mr. Mermejo, Governor Mermejo is in support of this resolution, and you have that support in your packet that we supplied you. They understand that the, that the importance of wilderness is not to restrict or to damage people's watersheds, or their, or their traditional uses of Asecas, or, or their land uses, or anything like that. We are, that is the furthest thing from our mind, is to, is to be at odds with our communities. And I am not an outsider. I am from Las Vegas, I'm from northern New Mexico. I've lived here all my life, my family's from here. I have, you know, farmers in my family, Aseca parciantes. We hunt, we fish, we gather firewood. All of the concerns that were brought up today by these people, I respect those concerns, and I completely agree that that should never be compromised in any decision that a governmental body makes. So first off, I want to clarify that, that I, we are not here to restrict, to, to make demands on anybody. The establishment of a wilderness designation of these inventoried roadless areas, they've been managed as wilderness for over thirty years. We are not changing the management of this area. We have tried to communicate and cooperate with, with the Aseca Associations and, and the Aseca Commission, to no avail, because they won't even sit down with us. And we're not, I mean, we're not trying, we are not trying to overreach or overstep anybody's use or, or love of the land. And there's even scientific information now that, that a wilderness area, a forested area, retains the snowpack that feeds these Asecas. We go in there and we cut too much timber, that snowpack melts in less than a week, and we've lost whatever snowpack there was, and it's happening every single year. We see it, we see it in Las Vegas. Our snowpack's gone in two weeks. The minute, you know, the, the temperature rises above seventy, seventy-five degrees, all the snowpack is gone. And what little we had, you know, we get to use. But that's the bigger problem, it's, it's not the forested area that, that is destroying our Asecas, it's the lack of moisture that we're getting. And, and, you know, the, the studies that have recently been done are showing that these forested areas actually retain whatever snowpack we have. And they allow, the shaded areas allow that snowpack to stay a while, and to at least feed our rivers and, and, and our, and our Asecas for a little bit longer. So I, I just wanted to dispel some of, some of the information that, that was shared earlier. We're, we are not outsiders. We are, we are members of this community, we are members of northern New Mexico, and we want to see this land protected. It, it benefits us more than, than, than has been portrayed. Regarding the grazing on the national monument, we wrote grazing into the national monument. No one's grazing allotment has been affected by that national monument designation. The Vaya Escalera, if it goes to the National Park Service, hunting, fishing, grazing will still be allowed on the Vaya Escalera. It's written in the, in the documents of origination in these areas. So in spite of some of the information that's being shared, we are not here to, to bring this to a public debate. We've, we've stated our case with you commissioners, and we appreciate your, your lending your ear to this information, and we ask you that, that you support this, this resolution, to, to make that roadless area a wilderness area. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Anyone else? Okay.
I don't have much to add to what Max said, but there were several...
Name for the record.
Oh, Carol Johnson, from Glorieta, and a volunteer within the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance. And I've been working on this project for about five years. But there are many people from Taos County who were going to be here, but they were not going to be here at this particular time. They were going to be here when the resolution was proposed, including grazing permities and others. That's all I wanted to say. But the point of this is that these lands are prime watersheds and wildlife habitat, and they are beneficial for the economy, for the local economy, and for the local people. And we have very strong support from Pico Riz Pueblo, and in fact, the governor met with us yesterday and offered further help. So thank you very much, and I hope you will approve this resolution.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Arturo Sandoval. I'm here representing the Wilderness Society, and I'd like to defer my time to a local that you probably all know, Erminio Martinez, please, a local rancher. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Erminio Martinez. I, I, I'm from Marroco Seco. I am certainly an insider. But I've worked, and I, I'm very good friends with Carlos Salazad. We serve on a committee. We draft agendas with Northern New Mexico and Southern Colorado Livestock Association. I know that we've got different philosophies when it comes to ranch management. I am a permitty, Forest Service permitty on three different allotments, Ojo Caliente, Taoski Valley, and US sixty-four, on the north end of the highway. We had some issues here off sixty-four, and I've addressed with Commissioner Blankenhorn at some other points, with some other individuals, and we work pretty much in harmony with, with our neighbor. And we try to preserve the planet. We have a moral and a legal obligation to be able to preserve. My grandfather grazed livestock up in the Taoski Valley before New Mexico became a state. I've been privileged to be able to hold on to those grazing permits at the ski valley. Now that it's wilderness, it's, well, it was turned into wilderness, I forget the year my grandfather was still alive. Not much of an education, but he was able to see that times would change, and it would be pretty much important that that forest would be preserved for future generations for his grandkids, his grandkid that was able to hold on to, to those grazing permits. I've had more hassles with Forest Service, with other areas that are not wilderness. Like I said, I'm in three different Ojo Caliente and of sixty-four. I'm alone up at the ski valley. I work with, with a northern district, Cuesta Ranger District, and they pretty much, I never see them. I've done improvements in that place, developed a spring with the same process that's with Nipa, that the Forest Service requires. And I've also worked in this committee with Arturo and the rest of the folks down up here with Commissioner from Mora, John. And we met initially when we were in that committee. I says, first of all, you've got to, if you're going to make some changes here in northern New Mexico with the Asecas, you have to bring them to the table, get the people from the Asecas, get the land grant people, and get the Forest Service permities. And Judge Nelson, former Judge Nelson, was involved in that committee, along with me and John and some other folks, these individuals. And I says, as long as we put that for traditional uses, that it'll be there in perpetuity, just like we have at, at Wheeler Peak Wilderness. We went before Congress to testify that if indeed that was in place, Congressman Lujan and Udall and some other prominent representatives, as long as we had traditional uses pretty much emboldened in, in that, in those covenants, then we would accept. If Asecas weren't involved, the land grant people were not involved, traditional uses were not involved, then that would be out of the discussion. So with that in mind, I certainly do promote wilderness. Again, we have a responsibility to our children, grandchildren, and so on down the line for And we made it pretty clear, pretty clear, that as long as traditional uses are in place, then I'm okay with it, as long as, if there's no traditional uses, then certainly we're going to fight. And that was one of the stipulations that we addressed with this, with these folks, with Arturo and the rest of John and some other people. And I know that I'm going to maybe lose Carlos Salazad as my friend, I still want to work with him, but we have some advantages in some areas, Carlos, and some other disadvantages. And I know that it's okay to address, you know, what's, where the advantage is. Carlos has the same thing, you know, northern New Mexico traditions, whether it's Mora, Las Vegas, Taos, Rio Arriba, whoever, we have the same, probably the same tradition, the same things close to our hearts, which is that forest, the water, the Asecas, the land. And we can work together with Northern New Mexico Livestock Association and some other agencies, as long as we're in the same boat, to be able to counter some of the things that the Forest Service, USDA, tries to, to force. Now with those cases that, those petitions that have been filed in Rio Arriba, and we've been able to work very, very, very close with Tom, the Secretary of Agriculture, Tom Vilsek. We met with him in Albuquerque, and he was very much in agreement that he would work with us in every which way. He even, he says that there's some, some mention here in the Treaty of Guadalupe Igalgo, and I even got a card back from him when we flew back to Washington, saying that we want to work with people from Las Vegas, northern New Mexico, is how he stated, Las Vegas, Mora, Rio Arriba, and Taos. That was a very, it was a very nice thing that he wrote back. And I hope Carlos, again, does not get offended in this regard, but that's my, my, my position. I want my kids and my grandkids to be able to graze up in that wilderness up at the ski valley. I made improvements. That's another question that arises periodically. Can we make a development of its wilderness? I developed springs, I've been made enclosures, I've had pictures, I have, and it's preserved for life, for game, wildlife, and so on, so forth, up at the ski valley. So with that in mind, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners. If there's any questions, feel free.
So what assurance do we have at this point of, of the current proposed wilderness area, that those traditional historic uses are going to be allowed? Is it in writing?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's in the resolution. I wonder if it's a good time to have a reading of the resolution as written?
As well, yeah. Mr. Chuleta?
Do you have a copy of that?
They're on the screen right now. Do we have hard copies of them? I'm not sure.
Quick, can you...
Okay.
Anyway, Ms. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Erminio for, for his, his comments that, you know, as we'll see, as the resolution is, is read, the, the land remains usable. It's, it's just not usable by motorized vehicles. And it's been that way for decades, and it's important to maintain some, some lands that, that can't be accessed by, by road. Thank you.
Taos County Resolution Twenty Fourteen dash fifty-two, a resolution supporting the designation of a wilderness in special management area for the inventoried roadless area adjacent to the Pecos Wilderness. Whereas there is an inventoried Forest Service roadless area adjacent to the Pecos Wilderness, some of which is in Taos County. And whereas these public lands that span the Carson and Santa Fe National Forest are national treasured prize by the New Mexicans and the people of Taos County for the quality of life, they bestow. And whereas these lands are prime watersheds, and in their natural conditions provide many benefits, including clean and abundant water supplies, clean air, and superior wildlife habitat. And whereas these lands provide significant economic benefit to the community in the form of tourism, real estate, value influx of new residents, and businesses, and activities directly related to the use and enjoyment. And whereas the Pecos Wilderness is one of the original wild wilderness areas designated on September third, nineteen sixty-four, with the passage of the Wilderness Act, and recently celebrated its fiftieth anniversary. And whereas the existing Pecos Wilderness is a cultural and natural landmark of the New Mexico, and is in the outstanding value to surrounding towns, tribal groups, Asecas organizations, land grant communities, sportsmen, ranchers, and outdoor enthusiasts. And whereas the wilderness designation protects grazing, hunting, and fishing, hiking, and horseback riding, and other traditional non-mechanized activities. And whereas the permanently protected, these lands would better protect their scenic, ecological, economic, cultural, and recreational values in perpetuity from the adverse effects of future development. And whereas it is the objective of the Forest Service not to allow fires to escape wilderness and cause damage to the communities and fire managers, may take whatever action is necessary to achieve fire management objectives in the wilderness areas. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Taos County Board of Commissioners as the following, that the Taos County Board of Commissioners fully support the designation as wilderness and special management areas for the inventoried roadless areas which are adjacent to the Pecos Wilderness for the benefit and present and future generations. That the county clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the Senator Tom Udall, Senator Martin Heinrich, and Representative Ben Ray Lujan. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Steve? Were you going to speak?
The fourth whereas, whereas these lands provide significant economic benefit to our community in the form of tourism, real estate value, influx of new residents, and businesses, and activities directly related to their use and enjoyment. The primary, the primary value is in the land itself, as it exists in its present state. Whatever benefit, economic benefit there is, comes from that very state, and that should be, again, the prime focus. I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with this, I'm just saying that this focus is wrong. And as to Mr. Blankenhorn's comment that the, the use is written in, the cultural and traditional uses are written into this resolution, that's fine. It can be written into this resolution. This resolution is a sense of this community, but you don't know what's going to happen with respect to the law, and that's the important part. Thank you.
I, I agree with you, Stephen. Mr. Malone, I wonder if we can change the language on that to, to reflect more specifically that concern?
Mr. Chairman, there would be absolutely nothing to prevent this commission from adding a whereas clause that made its support dependent upon the ultimate legislation incorporating the continued use for traditional cultural purposes. So yes, that could be added. We'd, we'd have to do it, I mean, I wouldn't want to do it on the fly, but we could, we could add it and bring it back before the commission.
Okay.
If it's the commission's...
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, um, upon hearing of what I heard, the whole intent of wilderness designations is to eliminate human activity. That is the sole purpose of wilderness national monument designations is to eliminate human activity. How can we, uh, you know, some of the comments I heard is, is how it's gonna promote, uh, assets to the local economy like in terms of jobs and whatnot. I've yet to see anywhere where any wilderness national designation has done that. The only place where, like Yellowstone National Park, they allow visitors to go in. In most of these roadless areas, you're not gonna see a single visitor. People can only see it from the outside. It's an external thing. It's not something that you can access. The other thing that was mentioned is we wanna preserve it. Well, right now drought was mentioned. Yeah, we're in a drought. We also have too many trees in this national forest and nothing has been done to manage them. How are we gonna get more water off this national forest if those trees aren't thinned out? In New Mexico versus US court case, that's a water court case of 1978, it stated that the whole purpose of the Forest Service was to produce a sustainable yield of timber for this country and enhance the water flows. That goes to say, if you don't log, you don't do anything like that or thin, how is that precept ever gonna reach the ground? Most of it right now gets intercepted by the branches and that and all that water just, off those branches evaporates. Contrary to what I heard here that they, it reaches the ground, it doesn't reach the ground. There's too darn many trees. The, um, the game plan of his designations is not gonna help any of us here unless this, this resolution has to be more specific. Protect is a word that's, you know, kinda loose, you know, it's not real clear. It doesn't have any real standing unless the language is more specific. It has to say that grazing and all the other traditional uses are gonna be protected or put on equal footing. It has to say that. Otherwise, you know, then the grazing may be left at the discretion of the federal agencies. The federal agencies don't like to see livestock grazing as it is. There, there's kinda conspiracy between the environmental groups, the Forest Service, the BLM and all the different federal agencies. Anyway, to make a long story short, this is nothing but a land and water grab. I would hope that you people see it that way and table this resolution. And I would ask that they, you get more players involved in this to come up with a, maybe a viable solution or not one at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Thank you. The seventh whereas, whereas wilderness designation protects grazing, hunting and fishing, hiking and horseback riding and other traditional non-mechanized activities. It's so not true that this eliminates human activity. All it eliminates is humans being able to drive into this land in vehicles. It's just keeping it roadless. And New Mexico has the smallest percentage of roadless public lands in the country at 2%. Let's not shave that 2% any further. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's been a wilderness area since 1964 and, and this particular area's been roadless since 1981. So I, I'd really like to address this today rather than having to go through the entire debate again. Uh, I think it's clear from the resolution that our support is completely contingent upon the seventh whereas. You know, we, this land is gonna continue to be used by, by humans for traditional purposes. It's just going to remain roadless, so.
Ms., Ms. Candace, if you wanna come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, could someone please tell me how many acres of this wilderness are in Taos County?
Is, is there an answer to that? Okay. In, in the meantime, is there someone else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, and I think we met with, with the congressional delegation, Ms. Commissioner Blankenhorn, and they assured pretty much that it would be in bold print traditional uses along with the existing roads that do exist here in Northern New Mexico that would stay in place. So that was a very satisfying answer. And like, uh, Carlos Salazar has indicated, I think we all, we're on the same page and, and there's, there is ways of, of, of being able to, to, to promote the health of, of Northern New Mexico for that matter. And the other thing that, that was addressed was those administrative hearings when there is a head gate that's gotta be in place that trickles down from, from the Forest Service onto the Aseca's and so on, so forth, that the, that the Forest Service would be just do it through administrative, uh, administration, I guess, so to speak.
Is that written?
And they wanted, they wanted to include that as part of the draft, yes. So I think, I don't know if it's gonna be deferred to have, like Carlos has indicated, to be able to get some input from all the differing agencies, I guess, or populations, then it's my, I have no problem with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ma'am, if you wanna come forward?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Lynn Aldridge. I'm a resident of Taos County. I appreciate comments have been made, but I want to stress one of the things that I think is a big advantage of turning this roadless area into wilderness. There is a small portion in Taos County. I live a 10-minute walk from the monument and I can walk over there. I can walk, nothing has restricted my use of that. And my understanding from reading is that the monument, the designation of the monument has brought increased tourism to Taos County. And so I would ask you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, oh, just real quick, there has to be some benefit to keeping some land without roads, right? I mean, there's ecological, environmental, economic, uh, benefits to that. And, and so I think that's part of the big picture. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Trujillo and then Ms. Moscarenas.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Max Trujillo, New Mexico Wildlife Federation. There's approximately 28,265 acres that is a inventoried roadless area. Some of that is going to be a special management area at the request of Cipapu for their summer activities, ATV use and stuff like that. So we, we have, we have, we've actually cooperated with everyone who has had concerns. If, if there is structure on this proposed area, if, if, and, and we've asked everybody to come forward, if there is any structure whatsoever, we would be happy to, we did it in, in Red River, we did it on, on the mountain biking trail between Taoski Valley and Red River. We cherry-stemmed that out in the Columbine-Hondul Wilderness Proposal. We're, we are not refusing to cooperate with any stakeholders. With regard to the grazing issue, grazing is explicitly protected under the Wilderness Act. Over and above our resolution, it is written in the Wilderness Act that is, it is explicitly protected, that traditional use. So I just wanted to bring that, that fact up. Thank you.
Ms. Moscarenas.
I've heard a lot of things here that possibly are good, but I think that we have to be more aware of what is written and make sure that the word, even though in Washington they might not know the spelling or the meaning of Aseca's because it has to be translated, but that that word, Aseca's, be there if this happens and that it is there for the protection of the Aseca's. But I think Mr. Martinez brought something up now and I, I think that it would be good for you gentlemen not to vote on it now, but hold it so that we can talk more and be more specific as to the wordings, especially in what our people, local people have been able to do. Because as my understanding is that Mr. Blankenhorn says that there is no sign of vehicles in this area right now. So there's no signs right now. What's the rush in, in putting it to vote at this time because it's not gonna change? But we do want to be, um, responsible people and make sure that we do have and that we do mark in any law that we have and teach the people who don't know about Aseca's that are important to us that these have to be named and as we have told the Forest Service. And because we have been to so many meetings with the Forest Service, there are things that have changed and we need more changes. But it takes a long time as Representative Ben Lujan told us. But I think that we have to be specific and I think all of you here know what Aseca's are. You all irrigate, you're all part of us, of what we do. And I think you want to comply with things that will protect our people. So I'd say that maybe, and I'd invite Arminio and whoever else to our New Mexico Aseca Commission meeting, plus some of you if you wanna go. It'll be in Santa Fe on the 19th of December at 10 o'clock at the Batán Building. And if you give me your phones, phone numbers, I can call you and tell you specifically what room, because we changed from the, the old Senate House to any, another room down below. But I think it's more important that we all agree to what we need in our areas. And I think that there's a lot of people who are not as learned, as involved or as informed as we should be. But we do welcome conversations and we do want to do the best because we, you, our representatives, our people, and you are the ones that are going to protect us when you can protect us and we ask you to. And so I feel that maybe some of these people who have already gone through this can go and talk to the commission, present, make a presentation so that they possibly, all of us can see and be on the same page. Possibly that would be the best.
Chairman, I just wanna say a few words. This will impact most of my district and it'll impact a little bit of the other districts, but it impacts more of mine. And the way that I look at it right now, I am not for it, but I think anyway Washington, DC is gonna pass it. So I think the best thing to do is for everybody to get together again, put what you wanna put on this resolution, specify exactly what, because government is government. Government will interpret it the way they want to. And put it in black and white and then bring it forward in front of this commission again. I think that's the best thing.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
I'll go in a second. For discussion, Mr. Thilke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Neil Thilke. I'm all for striking that, that whereas that deals with the economic development aspect. I don't think that, I don't think that contributes to the, that, to the document at all. And from what I've heard though, um, about Cipapu getting some sort of deferment or some sort of exception to the rules, they're, they're wanting to expand their business model from being a ski area that leases a ski thing, the ski, for skiing, and they wanna annex adjacent property for bike races and four-wheelers going into wilderness areas that I would have to ride a horse into or hike into. Uh, I think this is totally inappropriate use for, for those lands and they have, they have places where people can, can race around in circles and do yahoos. But, uh, please consider that Cipapu exception. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Trujillo, um, any ideas to when the deadline for this submission of resolutions is and is it going to be heard in, in the next few months in, in Washington, DC?
Let me, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, let me just preface my response by saying, we actually started this campaign and conversations with local communities about five years ago. Three years ago, we met with the New Mexico Aseca Commission of, uh, and, and we asked, we told them at that time about the plan. We gave them all the information we had at the time. We asked for their response. We've tried to get on their agenda now for the last three years with no success and no response. So I think we're at a point where this resolution fits in nicely with resolutions we've already gotten from Picuris Pueblo, from a number of the pueblos that are impacted by the Pecos Wilderness, from Santa Fe County Commission, from the Mora County Commission that just passed a resolution two weeks ago. I believe there's strong business support for this. I believe the Wilderness Act itself empowers traditional uses. The Rio Grande del Norte work clearly shows that we're worried and concerned about protecting local uses and that local people's voices were heard. So in response to your question, I would say we've been working on this quite a while. We've done outreach to everyone on this issue. I would urge the commission to move forward on the resolution as presented today and, and go ahead and get it on the record. We are hoping to present this resolution for congressional action in next year.
But as you see, we're, we're different at Taos County. If I were to have to vote on this today, I would vote against it simply because I don't feel that enough of our, of our constituents have been given an opportunity to voice their concerns and their opinions. The biggest thing for me is the Aseca's. Above all, we wanna make sure that our water aquifers are, are protected and that they are respected and preserved as, as Ms. Moscarenas and others have stated.
And that's a concern of ours, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. That's also a concern of ours. And I would say that as this proposal is written in terms of the areas that we're asking to be included in the wilderness, there's not a single head gate, there's not a single structure. There's nothing, there's not a single structure that's tied to an Aseca. We, we actually looked for that first among the due diligence that we initially looked at about five years ago. There's not a single Aseca head gate in any of these roadless areas, not one FYI.
So my suggestion to our attorney and input from the public is to clean up the resolution, make it stronger so that in fact the, the voice of this commission is heard in, in Washington, DC.
Okay. Oh, excuse me, just a discussion.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess this'll come before the new commission then, sometime in, in January it seems like, unless we feel like it's something that we can bring back for the, the last, is this something that we wanna bring back for the last sitting?
Mr. Malone? Is it possible?
Mr. Chairman, obviously I can draft language based on what I've heard from the Commissioners. There's not time to get additional input from the public to contribute to that drafting, but if the basic point is that the resolution is contingent upon the legislation adopting this expansion of the Pecos Wilderness specifically protecting stated traditional activities, that language can be drafted.
Okay. Commissioners, you feel fine with that? You feel comfortable with that?
But, Mr. Chairman, but see people like from my district are gonna have to get together. They're gonna have to come over here and talk to our attorney to see exactly what they want in that resolution. Because it's like I stated a while ago, if, you know, we just put whereas and don't specify, government is government. They'll do whatever. Go ahead, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I, I need to make clear that I can't draft a new resolution based on people coming to my office and giving me their ideas. I have to draft it based on the commission's consensus. And so my understanding of the commission's consensus is that everyone wants to see the traditional act- traditional activities preserved in this expansion of the wilderness. Some of the Commissioners think that the resolution already does it, others do not. And so it's a matter of drafting stronger language. I can do that. But in terms of drafting something based on people coming into my office, I would be usurping the role of the commission in filtering those comments and deciding what the people wanted.
Commissioner Doudon, I know you made the motion, the original motion. Maybe you could amend the motion.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend the motion. If you amend your second, and I'll amend, then, will you amend your second?
Depends on what your motion is.
My motion is going to be that we do not approve Resolution 2014-52.
Is it going to, we want it to come back again?
No, we'll just vote on it today.
I guess my suggestion, Commissioners, was that the resolution be made stronger by our legal team, by Mr. Malone and his team, and then bring it back before the end of this year for approval or disapproval, based on the discussion that has taken place today.
Again, I stress that the word Aseca be included in there because traditional uses, we have it with the Forest Service, but it's up to whoever's managing and directing who decides what traditional uses are. So I want Aseca's, if this is going to be worked on, and I can tell the rest, you know, what the conversation was here, but Aseca's and that use by the local people have to be specifically lined in bold letters if possible because we have to make them aware of what is important to us who live here, who stay here, who were born here, not who come and give directions only.
Well, then, I'll amend my motion again. Then, I guess, Mr. Malone, work on it and what you've heard from this commission and then bring it back on the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and second that, resecond that. And at this point, I'll just go ahead and call for the vote.
I'm just not clear on the timeframe, I guess.
The last meeting?
Okay, yes.
Just so that we know, the last meeting, Mr. Archuleta, is going to take place December 16th. December 16th, okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead and continue. Sorry about that.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone who had an opportunity to say something about it. We'll move on then to the next item, 7B, a presentation from Taos Alive. Ms. Julie Martinez and Mr. Ricardo Valdez from the Taos Alive Coalition, welcome.
How many Commissioners?
Sorry, just taking a second. I can't always see the screens. I have bad eyesight.
You're both kind of blind.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone, thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julie Martinez. I'm the Substance Abuse Prevention Program Manager for Holy Cross Hospital.
I'm Ricardo Valdez, the coordinator for Taos Alive.
We're here this morning, let's see, I'm trying to figure out how to talk and use this at the same time.
Well, we're just, our vision statement as far as who we are, and if you can see the screen, Taos County youth will live a community that is safe, secure, and drug-free. Being a former teacher, that's a big part of me. Mission statement, Taos Alive Coalition unites the community to plan and implement strategies that prevent and reduce substance use and consequences among Taos County youth. Goals, Taos Alive Coalition will work to achieve the following goals in alignment with drug-free communities. Increase community collaboration among Taos County, reduce substance abuse among Taos County youth.
I just want to give you a little bit of background of how we do things. And we use what is called the Strategic Prevention Framework, which is evidence-based strategies to reduce substance abuse and in prevention in general. And I just want to show you this so you can have kind of a roadmap to the rest of our presentation. And on this, can you see that on your, okay. So we have assessment, what we, the first thing that we do is we look at our community data. We look at what is happening in our community through data, from surveys, but also through key informant interviews. And we try to get the best picture of our community through assessing what is happening. And then we look at capacity. The capacity is really important. And what we do with capacity is we gather the community together to build a strong coalition to move towards reducing substance abuse. And then the next one is planning. Through this, we again, look at the data and we look at the strategies that will address the data that we have. So we do it really specifically, we look at what is happening in our community and why it's happening here. Why is Taos different? And based on that, we devise strategies that would affect that local condition. And then we go to implementation. So we work on implementing the strategies. And finally, we evaluate to make sure what the work that we are doing is effective. So that's just a roadmap for what we're going to show next. This next slide here is under assessment. And this one is for tobacco use. And this is a slide from the Youth Risk and Resiliency Survey. Are you all familiar with that survey? No? Okay, I'll give you a little bit of history. The Youth Risk and Resiliency Survey is done every other year in Taos County. It's a survey done by Department of Health and it's given in Taos County middle schools and high schools. So every single county, we can, I mean, every single school, we can identify it by schools or by county. We have to get specific permission to get it per school district. But anyway, this is for Taos County in 2013, and these are alcohol, I mean, tobacco data, sorry. So if you look at our current use of tobacco for all Taos County youth, 9th through 12th grade, we are Taoses in the red and the New Mexico data is in blue. So you can tell we are above the New Mexico data for any current tobacco use. Hookah use, we are below. Cigarette use, again, we are above the New Mexico data. And cigars, we are above, and also with spit tobacco.
Chairman, forgive me for my ignorance, but what's hookah?
I was going to ask the same thing, but I was hoping somebody else would do it.
Water pipe, where have you guys been?
Right. It's really interesting from my understanding, for those of you that remember the Clean Indoor Air Act that I think was 2008, the only thing that didn't apply was hookahs. And I think at the time, our governor enjoyed going to hookah bars. So yeah, it is a pipe that uses water to smoke tobacco. And I'm not sure currently if we have hookah bars in Taos, but in places like Albuquerque and Santa Fe, they have quite a few hookah bars. So I'm assuming that's why we have lower rates in Taos.
So it has nothing to do with pot?
Actually, it kind of looks like a bong. But it's used for tobacco, so I don't know if it can be used either way. But it's like smoking tobacco within a bong.
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you asked. I was debating whether to ask or not. I was just...
Please ask any questions.
And that's the thing about a lot of this stuff, people just don't know. And that's the thing we're trying to present to the youth is, you know, a lot of them are unfamiliar, not only with a lot of the tobacco and so on, RX drugs, as you'll see as we go on in the presentation. So we move along to alcohol use. If you look and you see grades 9 through 12, ever drank alcohol Taos and you see New Mexico, Taoses above, you know, as far as alcohol use within our community. Current drinking, 37.4%. Binge drinking, 23%. Drinking before the age of 13, 30%. Road with drunk driver, somebody drinking, 30%. Driving, drinking and driving, 14%. So you see, you know, these are the statistics that are here in Taos and these are what we're trying to combat as far as Taos Alive getting, you know, and that's the thing with a lot of youth. You know, statistically, a lot of us don't even know this. And that's the whole thing, you know, and feel free to ask us and we will tell you.
Can I add something? So, you know, we hate to be at the top of these sort of things. And the truth is, Taos is at the top of the state for having youth who drink under the age of 13, and New Mexico is the top for the country of youth drinking underage 13. So that's definitely one of our priority areas.
Okay. Moving on, marijuana, RX drugs, actually. This is real important to me. I've currently been doing presentations in the high school and a lot of these kids do not know what they're getting into. You know, I had one student say, well, if I take an ibuprofen, is it the same as Percocet? You know, that's the thing with a lot of, if you look along the lines of marijuana use, synthetic marijuana, painkillers, getting high, inhalants, cocaine, ecstasy, methamphetamine, heroin, you know, these kids don't even know that Percocet are equivalent to heroin, you know? And a lot of these kids are taking stuff within the community and they're getting hooked on it. And it all comes down to education and people not knowing the consequences of getting into these particular drugs. So us as Taos Alive, we're trying to make people aware of that. That's what it's all about. It's all about education, knowing what you're getting into. You know, I recently talked to some of the law enforcement in Espanola and Santa Fe and they're like, exactly, that's our problem too. These people just don't know what they're getting, as far as people and kids don't know what they're getting into. So...
Can I ask a question? How many of you know what 420 is?
Uh-oh.
We got one. We got one. Just one person. I think it's really important for us to know the lingo and what youth are saying and what it means. So 420 is another name for marijuana. And if, so I don't know if anybody owns this store in this room, but we have a 420 gear here in Taos, right? How many of you have seen 420 gear? Okay, it's over by Chavez Jewelers. So really, although they say they sell tobacco products or paraphernalia for tobacco, 420 is another name for marijuana. So it's just good to kind of know the lingo that youth are using and what these things mean. So just kind of side note on that one. Okay, so here's a map, oh, here's a map of the United States. And you can see this is 2012 data on drug overdose deaths. And you'll see that New Mexico is second, has the highest second rate of drug overdose deaths in the country. In 2008, we were the highest, but we were trumped by West Virginia. They took over as the first. And you can see that we are almost double and almost tripled in some of the states. So here's another chart, and you will see on this one that, this is New Mexico overdose death rates. And at the bottom in the yellow line is the US rates. And you can see in New Mexico, there are only two counties that are lower than the United States' death rates. Only two counties in our whole entire state. Of course, you see at the top, Rio Arriba has the highest overdose death rates and Taos being the seventh. But my understanding, and I'm not sure all the ways that data works, but my understanding that Que and Sierra County are smaller counties, and so this data may even be skewed, Taos may even be higher on this chart than we'd like it to be. So the reason we've showed you this data is because this is what we look at. These are the things we look at to decide what initiatives we're going to work on within our community.
As far as youth involvement, parent, we approach people throughout the community to be involved as far as sectors, youth, parents, big business community. I'm real happy to say that Chevron Mining jumped the board as far as becoming a sector for Taos Alive. You know, these are people that are at the table. These are the people that come and say, well, you know, we think this should be happening in our community, or, you know, with experience throughout, you know, Taos community. Media schools, you know, Taos, certain schools that are involved, youth-serving organizations, law enforcement. So like I say, I'm always out there trying to get people to come to the table. Of course, you guys are the community that, you're going to help us to make these decisions. And of course, bringing it to you guys is the next step. But, you know, as far as capacity, this is how we bring people together. This is what we need, you know, and that's the thing, a lot of people don't know as far as statistically on, well, alcohol and tobacco, it's out there. The new thing now is drug prescription, RX drugs, you know, and that's kind of what we're, of course, we're trying to do all of it, but, you know, that's one of, you know, just bringing people, so they know and educating them.
I'm going to add something to that. So I think what's important when we do coalition work is not that we are doing the work here. It's not me and Ricardo doing the work. It's the community. And it's bringing different people from the community together in ways they haven't been together. Getting health, the health, people from the hospital, sitting in the same room with law enforcement, sitting in the same room with the principals, because every single one of these sectors has, works within the community around these issues. And they've always worked in silos or separate. And so now it's time to work together because this is a huge issue in our community. And I bet if I asked, and I'm not going to ask, but I bet if I asked in here, every single person in this room has been affected somehow, some way, by substance abuse through their family or through someone they care about. So this is a huge problem. So it's no longer we're working apart, it's about working together because that's really the only way we're going to make change. So capacity is a huge part of what we do.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Navigated restrictive drugs, no. How are you going to work on that one? Because I'm from the, I represent the southern part of the county. Over there, everybody gets Percocets. All they do is come to the doctor and boom, there it is. Six, five, 300 at a time, no? How are you going to work with that?
That's a great question.
They eat those like they eat candy over there.
No, you know, that's a great question and it's actually leading into our next several slides. So it's a great introduction to our next several slides that we'll get into. And if there's something we don't cover in that, I'd be happy to answer it above and beyond that. I do want to say, after talking to Taos County EMS, they do find in the lower, the southern part of the state, Penasco more, that they do find more overdose deaths that they're called to in that area. So you're absolutely right. And it's, you're right on the border of Rio Arriba and so we do find more in that area. And I do want to address that, and so I apologize if I don't address it immediately, but we are going to address it through the presentation. And if it's not, I'll make sure I answer that question more specific, okay? So this next, oh, yeah, this next slide is the beginning to the answer to that. And so a lot of the times, we think of prevention as going into the schools, doing curriculum, doing presentations. That's a little bit of what we do, but really, prevention has changed because what they're finding is that some of those prevention strategies have very little impact. And so what they've looked at that does work is environmental strategies. And when I tell people we do environmental strategies, they think we're, you know, outside recycling and stuff. But I found this through CADCA, which is Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America, and this is a definition, says incorporates prevention efforts aimed at changing or influencing community conditions, standards, institutions, structures, systems, and policies. These strategies should lead to long-term outcomes. And on the right, you'll see a chart. And on the right of that chart, it says all youth and their environment that affects them. So norms, social norms, regulations, and the availability, as you talked about, the availability of so much opioids or painkillers. And then on the left-hand side, you'll see individual youth. So what affects them, what environments affect them, their family, the school, their faith community, their healthcare providers. And so these are the areas that we work in, which leads back to the sectors that Ricardo spoke about. We also use CADCA's seven strategies, which is, again, is CADCA stands for Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America. And the seven strategies include providing information, which they all lead to the end, but I'll start with the beginning, providing information, enhancing skills, providing support, enhancing access, or reducing barriers. So just as an example, enhancing access, so maybe it'd be, well, enhancing access to being able to dispose of unused prescription drugs, or reducing barriers. So maybe it's reducing the barrier to other forms of pain, ways of dealing with pain than prescription drugs. Changing consequences, the physical design of something, modifying or changing policies. So these are the things that change the environment that our youth live in, which then has the biggest impact. I mentioned earlier, I used to work more in tobacco prevention, but I mentioned earlier the Clean Indoor Air Act. And... And when that act passed, there were more calls to the New Mexico quit line than there ever had been. Calls shot up immediately and more people quit. So we know that when we change the environment, that people change their behaviors, which is why we have road signs and law enforcement and such. So, okay. And I put a picture of a holy boat because I.
A hole in a boat.
A hole in a boat.
Not a holy boat.
Yeah, not a holy boat. A boat with a bunch of holes. And I put this picture because I use this analogy. We don't want to, right now, we're in our community around substance abuse, we're going down the river in a holy boat. And it's not going to take one strategy to fill those holes. It's going to take a lot of strategies. We have to fill a lot of holes to be able to get this boat to float. So we'd use a lot of different strategies.
And just to add something like you asked, as far as, you know, people are getting all these Percocets. They don't know the consequence. They think, oh, cool, I get, you know, it makes me feel great and they get this high. And, you know, that's what this is all about, is educating them and saying, hey, you know, despite you getting fifty Percocets, there are other ways to approach this as far as disposal and not abusing these drugs. You know, prescription drugs, you know, there's certain ways you need to use them, to use them correctly. And that's the thing with a lot of these counties, these small communities, they don't know that. They think it's, hey, prescribed by the doctor, it's all good. And that's the case, is that.
Let me ask this question, Mr. Chairman. One Percocet is the evaluation of how many Tylenols?
Well, we have a pharmacist in the room. There's a pharmacist in the room. That's not for me to answer. John, can you answer that one? John's my boss.
Oh, okay.
And also a pharmacist. So that would be a really good question for him. Sorry, John, you didn't know.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm John Hutchinson, the Director of Health Outreach for the hospital. And what was the question?
What's the evaluation of one Percocet to how many Tylenols?
How many?
Yeah, what's the?
Oh, Tylenol.
Regular Tylenol.
Well, Percocet has Tylenol in it. And so it's a combination of the two. But the Tylenol's not a narcotic. It's the oxycodone in the Percocet part, that's the narcotic, that's the big narcotic painkiller. And then they combine it with Tylenol, which is about 325 milligrams.
And Percocet, doesn't it damage your liver?
In high quantities, it can. So above, you'd have to take a lot. You'd have to take about ten Percocet pills to start to damage your liver and your kidneys.
So if you take ten a day or fifteen like they do down south, it's going to damage you then?
It can, yeah. And many people that take high quantities of the narcotics, they make the narcotic without Tylenol in them. And so they can take very high doses as they become dependent to the narcotic because it does not contain the Tylenol. The Tylenol in it is, limits the amount that you can take.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Learned something today, thank you.
And I guess that's our approach, is expressing that and so people know because that's the whole part of it, is that people don't know. And that's kind of where it's coming from. So as far as implementation, tobacco, prescription drug abuse, prevention, harm reduction, alcohol, and that kind of all comes into play with just getting out there and introducing it to the, not only the public, but, you know, our youth. That's where it is. You know, we're here talking about hunting, I'm a big time hunter, this and that. But if we're going to, you know, our youth are going to destroy themselves with these drugs, we're not going to be able to appreciate what we have here in Taos. And that's the thing about Taos and that's what we're all about, just getting it out there so people know and people can change and they can think for themselves as opposed to getting messed up on these drugs. And then by that time, they're already in control by the drug.
So I just want to add on this slide, some of the initiatives we're working on now are tobacco, prescription drug abuse. And we're both working in prevention and harm reduction and then in alcohol from looking at the data that we had. The first one that I want to talk about, and we'll get into RX drugs more, I promise. So the first one is tobacco. And we are working on priority populations. So the state recognized that there's certain populations that smoke at higher rates. And so we're working within those populations within our community through Rocky Mountain Youth Corps with our young adult population, with UNM Taos Adult Basic Education, through their young adult population, with the LGBTQ community, which is the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community, which smoke at double the rate as non-LGBT community members, and the Native American community. So those are some of our efforts that are focused on tobacco. Yeah. And prescription drugs, so here it is. And I can go very in-depth on this and you can ask as many questions as you want. And we have a picture of Lieutenant Maggio up here with a prescription drop box. It was the first in Taos County. So part of our plugging the hole in the boat is access to access to drugs. And so sometimes people get drugs for legitimate reasons, right? Prescription drugs for legitimate reasons. I know a lot of elderly people have a high amount of prescription drugs. And in our community, because of the poverty, they save them because they don't want to have to go to the doctor again. They share them with people because they, you know, think, oh, you know, well, I can help out, you know? And so what we've been promoting is disposing of unused or expired prescription drugs so they don't get in the hands of our youth accidentally. Not that the youth accidentally would get a hold of them, but that the people who have them in their cabinets wouldn't accidentally be providing them to the youth. So this was our first drop box. It's held at the Taos Police Department. We have our second drop box at Cuesta Police Department. And we just got one at Taos Pueblo Police Department. So now we have three locations within our community that people can drop off their prescription drugs. So, and then we participate twice a year with a Drug Enforcement Administration. And we have drop-off locations in Penasco, Cuesta, Taos Pueblo, Taos, there's one more. We've done them actually on request by Commissioner Sanchez on the border of Colorado so we could reach the most northern part of the community. And we had the Colorado State Troopers help in that area. So that's part of the disposal. We do do public education through media, through pamphlets, through rack cards that are at our pharmacies and such. Youth education, Ricardo's been doing media literacy presentations around prescription drug abuse within the schools. Do you want to talk a second about that, Ricardo?
Sure. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get the youth involved. Being a former videologist for the Outdoor Channel, stuff like that, what I'm trying to do is try to get the youth to create these ads, these media ads. I was in Santa Fe yesterday and I was talking to Phil Lucero. He's actually putting together a video with the youth, I think, six different counties throughout New Mexico. If we can relate or actually involve the kids in a lot of these videos, they're going to know, they're going to start to educate. And that's where it's at. They, you know, doing these presentations, they, I was surprised that a lot of these kids do not know what they're getting into. So involving media, which is, you know, kids can run our computers better than we can, let's be truthful. That's kind of what, that's what we're trying to do within the Taos schools. I'd love to get it out to Cuesta, Penasco, other schools so they can create these, you know? And that's what we're about. Not only me and Julie doing all the work, we want to involve everybody else throughout the community. And that's where it's important. Like, you know, these billboards that you see all over the place, you know, they encourage people to, analogy, I guess, to drink and all this stuff. We can get the youth to continue to look at, hey, this is what this is going to do to you. This is what's going to happen. They're going, it's going to, it's going to go into, you know, it's going to sink in. Being a former teacher, that's what it's all about, is creating that and education and learning.
I want to add a little bit of that. We don't go in and say, hey, don't use prescription drugs. We know that doesn't work. It's been proven those sort of prevention techniques don't work anymore. And so we go in through using media literacy. How many of you have seen ads on television promoting prescription drugs?
Everybody.
Right? Everybody's seen it. And so it's, can you believe that we, there's only two countries in the whole world that allow ads for prescription drugs on television? And we're one of them. I actually met with, I think he was the Deputy Director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy in Santa Fe at the attorney, US Attorney's Office. And he asked me, what's one thing you think we can do to help this? And I said, stop allowing commercials for prescription drugs on television. Because what we're telling, what they're telling people is that if you have something wrong, you can fix it. All it takes is a pill. And so we've created a society where we think all it takes is a pill to fix our problems. And I mean, of course, there are legitimate reasons for that. But anyway, so we work with media literacy. We do also provider education. I'm not sure if you know, but several years ago, they required that all providers take a four-hour, is it four hours, John? A four-hour class on chronic pain management. And so we provided the class here in Taos via the VA office. And so we brought provider education. John initiated some talks and created opiate prescribing guidelines at the hospital. So no longer can someone come in and get a 30-day prescription at the hospital for painkillers. They can get short-term prescription for a couple of days until they can see their regular provider. But of course, they, their prime concern is treating pain, but also making sure that people are not doctor shopping. And John always says one thing that I'm going to quote him on that he got from another provider, is that all of the prescription drugs come from one place, and that's through the pen of a provider. And so we do work on, we are working on guidelines right now. School policies, we're also working on school policies because there were no policies in the schools that, there were policies around youth who brought their prescriptions to the school, right? And if they had a cold, you know, and they'd give it to the nurse and they'd give it to them. But there were no policies. What happened if youth brought other people's prescriptions? We had schools in our community that called us and said, we have youth chopping up painkillers in the bathroom and snorting them through their nose. We've had youth in our community who've overdosed at the schools and ambulance has to be called. So we help schools create policies. We also have an naloxone project with Mr. Hutchinson presented on several months ago at this commission, to the commission meeting. And I would go more in-depth if you want me to on that, but I know he did present on it. But basically, how many of you in here know what naloxone is? No? Or Narcan? Thank you. Narcan? Okay. So Narcan is the drug that is administered when someone is overdosing from opiates such as Percocet or oxycodone or hydrocodone. And it reverses the effects of an overdose. So if someone's overdosing, you can give this to them intranasally and immediately it will take them out of their overdose. And so we've been working hard at getting this out into the community through local providers, through pharmacies. And we're working as well with local and state law enforcement to get first responders. I know Commissioner Sanchez mentioned that he, that we really needed that in the northern part of the state because of the time that it takes for EMS to get there. And so we're working to get first responders in that part of the community to also carry Narcan. So that's a huge part of our project. Commissioner Duran, is there anything that we didn't cover under prescription drugs that you have questions that you think could be addressed?
I think not.
Commissioner Sanchez had a.
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, Julie and Ricardo, you know, we, and I keep bringing this up, we've got a problem up north in my district. You know, we just lost a gentleman here last week. Overdose. You know, I've got a good rapport with the schools, the village. What can we do to go and talk to the kids and get them on board and maybe have them something that shows the dangers by, you know, using all this restrict, the drugs that are out there? And, you know, sometimes we have these people out there just selling it, making money with the prescription drugs, and that's what they're doing. It's like Commissioner Duda just said, you know, somebody go get them, they'll sell them. Five dollars a pop or whatever, I don't know, throwing that out there. But I need to, and then a few folks would like to meet with me in Cuesta. You know, I can talk to the superintendent, principals. And let's try and, you know, we've already lost a few individuals in my area.
Just from my experience, you know, doing these presentations, education, they don't know. You know, they think they're a recreational drug that they can just pop in their mouth and there's no consequence. And that's what these kids are realizing, you know? And that's the thing is that prescription drugs, you know, it's not just a certain type of student. It's an athlete. You know, we've all heard the stories in Albuquerque of the football player that, you know, got addicted to prescription drugs, later on turned to heroin, you know, he ended up dying in his driveway. So that's the thing is, and I was real surprised, you know, they were talent, you know, I was talking to kids and, you know, I can get a lot out of kids, just being a former, like I keep saying, I was a former music director and, you know, even as a music director, I had kids that were hooked on drugs and, you know, trying to get them out. And I, you know, there were some that I lost. But, you know, it's all about education. These kids don't know. You know, like I said, one student asked me, well, if I take a Ibuprofen, will I die? I'm like, no, there's certain ways to do it. There's certain, you know, things that you have to know about prescription drugs. And that's the main thing, is getting into the schools. And not only with the high school kids, you got to get them to where they're younger and you got to start instilling that in their brain. And, you know, these kids are, you know, kids are smart. You know, if they know down the road that they're going to be, you know, addicted to this stuff, more than likely, they're going to stop because they, you know? But education, getting into the schools, the presentation that I do, it kind of goes into the molecular structure of heroin and relating it to Percocets and how they're similar, you know, stuff like that, so.
And Ricardo, and Julie, do you have any signs that we could put up the elementary at the high school that we could put out there as they're coming into the school?
See, and that's where school involvement, you know, getting the kids to do it. I mean, they come up, recently I was at the high school and we did a presentation because what we do is we actually create media for not only the radio, but for newspaper ads and so on and so forth. It's getting that involvement with their, you know, I'm not sure about Cuesta, but I know Taos has an audio/video productions class that they do all this stuff, you know? That's where we need to involve the youth. So they can see it and they can create it. They know what's going on out there. And, you know, and it kind of goes out throughout the community. You know, they're presenting it, you know, they're talking to their parents about it. But like I said, it's high school for sure, middle school for sure, we got to get younger too.
And Ricardo, could we not borrow that or can we borrow those videos from Taos to take to Cuesta?
At this moment, we're trying to create them. These kids are going to, you know, we're, as far as involvement, trying to get them to create stuff.
And here's my card, I'd like for you folks to call me back and let's set something up with my district. Thank you.
I'd like to add to that. So we do have a presentation that Ricardo does do and I believe he just got a call this morning from Cuesta's principal.
From Penasco.
Oh, it's Penasco, but you are working on Cuesta correctly.
I left her a message.
So we've left message and we also want to work with them to redo their policy around prescription drugs. And I think it's great if we can get posters, if the youth can help make them, they have ownership to them and they learn at that same time. So I think instead of us bringing in posters, the youth helping to create them. So I'd love to meet with you so we can work further towards that.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Ricardo.
Commissioner Veroni?
And again, thank you. You know, our youth are so important in our community and education, education is one of the biggest components that we have to educate people about drugs. And I know Mr. Stephen Hall is probably sitting behind you and gnawing at the bit to get up there, but he did make a presentation to us just recently at a bunch of, I guess, prescription drugs that he found within the community along one of the rivers here. And is there some thing that you guys are looking at to try to help combat some of that? I mean, I guess several different occasions, he's found those type of drugs just floating around in our community.
So the disposal's part of that. The tricky part of that is that it is illegal to carry a prescription that is not yours. So if you happen to find one laying around, probably the best thing is not to pick it up and take it to the disposal to take your own. Because if you are caught with someone else's, it is illegal. So I don't know the answer to your question. I don't know that there's a specific good answer for that. But I think it's important, the education to our community about disposing properly. And so we've been doing quite a bit of that education, especially not flushing them down the toilet, which then they end up in our water system. And we all know the effects of that, especially talking about a secias and the importance of water in our community. So disposal's part of that. I don't know that I answered your question, Commissioner.
Well, just proper disposal, that's the whole point, is that a lot of people don't really understand how to get rid of it. You know, I had knee surgery about seven or eight years ago and I flushed mine down the toilet. I didn't know, you know, Percocets that I got rid of. And that's the thing is just getting disposal out there because, you know, people just don't know where to get rid of them, and they're throwing them in the river, and unfortunately they're getting into our aquifers and kinda messing up our asecias and stuff like that. So that's kind of just getting out there more as far as maybe a media campaign saying, "Hey, disposal, this is what we need to do, this is how we need to get it out there." I hope I answered your question.
You said earlier that you're talking about education, which is obviously terribly important, and it seems to me the other end of that spectrum is the provider. And you said that it all begins with the pen of a provider. And so maybe you can't answer this question, but maybe Mr. Hutchinson can as a pharmacist without spending a whole lot of time on it. If I'm not mistaken, New Mexico has a prescription drug management program, and what I found was empty containers of, a dozen of them, of narcotics. They were empty, they'd been used. So if somebody could talk for just a moment about how that's supposed to work, the prescription drug management program?
I can talk a little bit about it, and if John wants to talk about it more, John? So a couple of years ago, the PMP, it's called the Prescription Monitoring Program Computer Database, was very archaic, and it would take over a week, from my understanding, or at least a couple of days to get back feedback from that. But it was updated several years ago and is easier to use now, and I'll let John talk a little bit more about how that works.
So all of the physicians can access the prescription monitoring report, and it's a database through the New Mexico Board of Pharmacy. And basically, what they do is before they prescribe a narcotic, they enter the patient's name in this database, and really within minutes or even seconds, they get a report of the narcotic use of that person. And it's basically a safety tool, so if people are going to multiple doctors and taking multiple drugs that are narcotics, the physician can look at that and have an intelligent conversation with the patient and ask him about their narcotic use. So it's available to all people that prescribe.
The containers that I found, none of them had a name, address, or telephone number on it. How does that appear to you? These were, most of them were the Hydrocodone combinations with acetaminophen, ramadol, and one other one. Again, all they had was, they had RX number, prescription number, but no name, no address, no telephone number. All coming from about half a dozen different suppliers through one central distribution.
Well, you can still get these drugs on the internet, unfortunately. And there are actually physicians that have set up practices across the country, and it's legal to get them through the internet. So I don't know if they were repackaged, or they were from an internet company, or sometimes the clinics dispense samples and the labeling processes are different from pharmacies, and so...
So it's more of a distribution sort of network, some sort of corporate involvement, the doctors and networks working together to, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that's what it sounds like to me.
Well, you can get the drugs from a variety of sources, and it's even possible that they were repackaged, they were transferred to a different container, and so...
I wish I had one of the containers. As a matter of fact, I do, and maybe now that I see them, the hospital, maybe I'll bring one of them.
So Steve, if you can speed this over.
There was a label behind the label that you could read. But again, I think that the label behind what could actually be read was probably had the sort of the same, sort of generic information about the contents. And then this prescription information was, you know, labeled over it. But I'll bring one of them to you.
Yeah, that's my card in contact, so please do.
Thank you.
Sure.
One of the, sorry, John, were you done? You might wanna stay close by. He broke his foot. One of the things about the PMP, the Prescription Monitoring Program, that is being worked on but is not happening yet is that states are not communicating. And so if you get a prescription in Taos and then go up to Colorado Springs, they don't communicate with each other, and so that needs to be worked on on a national level. But just to say, in New Mexico alone, just the update with the PMP in the last several years has made a huge difference. Was there any other questions on prescription drugs before we move on?
Just how much more longer?
Five minutes, depending on questions, I guess, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
And we were talking about public education, media campaigns, and I'll go real quick. You know, just like in the high school, trying to get them to do videos and creating their own ads. Alcohol policies, you know, bringing forth, you know, one thing that we're trying to bring to Taos is the ban of miniatures, miniature alcohol bottles throughout Taos County. I know there's a policy in Santa Fe that took place along Airport Road, I believe, where, you know, you can't purchase miniatures in any of the establishments there. And that's kind of what we're aiming at, and that was our initial reason why we wanted to, I guess, bring Taos Alive to light. That's kind of what we're going for. We've talked to some people in Santa Fe and, you know, bringing forth these policies. Taxes, alcohol density, I went to the alcohol density meeting yesterday, you know, and just bringing forth, you know, the whole problem with alcohol, you know? As far as DUIs, people in the community, crimes related, you know, with alcohol. Youth education, media literacy.
I just, I wanna add to that really quickly, and I promise I'll make this quick. So alcohol policy, really, like we talked about with tobacco policy, those are one of the things that makes the most changes. It's been proven throughout the country that increasing alcohol taxes decreases use but also generates revenue that can deal with, that can help deal with prevention, intervention, and treatment. So we're working on that at a statewide level. And alcohol outlet density has been shown to have a huge link with the increase, so the increase of alcohol outlets, it shows an increase with crime, with violence. So you look at areas that have a lot of alcohol outlets, and then you look at the crime associated with that area, and it's increased with alcohol outlets. Makes sense, right? So I just wanted to add that. And on the right, it shows one of our ads that we've done, and just to tell you that we do collaborate with Taos County DWI, they're a huge part of our coalition, and so we work closely with them, and Rocky Mountain Youth Corps on the ads. That's just one example.
Now, you mentioned, Mr. Valdez, in Santa Fe there is an ordinance already in place, or is it being drafted against the little miniature bottles?
It's already in place. It's a litter ordinance, so they've done it through a litter ordinance. And what they found is several reasons why that works. You know, if you go out for a walk and all, anywhere in Taos County, you'll find miniatures all over the place. So it's really a litter problem, but also talking to our local law enforcement, it's a problem with our youth because they're easy to conceal, they're cheap, they're easy to steal. And if you look at our data within our community, our youth are using hard liquor more than any other liquor. So we really wanna look at that for our community.
Is it possible to share a copy of that? It's with our...
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, we already have that copy and are working in that direction.
It is something that I personally would like to see created and drafted and proposed to the, you know, to the new county commission in January or sometime next year.
And Chairman, I've been on several community cleanups, and the amount of miniatures that we pick up alongside the roads is phenomenal. I've never seen, I mean, the majority of the trash is miniature bottles. I mean, you can pick up five bags of trash and one bag of miniature bottles, you know, on a given road. It was, I mean, I couldn't believe it, till I did it myself, I've been on several community cleanups, and we walked the street just cleaning them up, even right here in town on Salazar Road we did, and they're just miniatures on both sides of the road.
So maybe it's an ordinance that both the town and the county could work on?
Well, we would love that, and we have asked Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, they did a community cleanup, and we asked them to take photos, and so they put it out in the paper of all that they cleaned up of miniatures. And it's twofold, one, it helps clean up our community in two ways. With the alcohol problem, it will reduce the amount that youth are able to access and also clean up our community. And so, lastly, we would, so one of the reasons why we're here today, oh, did I not change it? Sorry, we're changing too right here. One of the reasons that we're here today is we are in our fifth year of funding under Drug-Free Communities Grant. It's a SAMSA grant under the Office of National Drug Control Policy. So we've been doing the work in the community for the last four years. The way that the grant funding works is it's in five-year cycles, and we get two terms maximum. And so we're in our fifth year, we've done a lot of great work, we can, we think we've gotten some really good momentum behind us, built our capacity, and we're ready to move to apply for our next five years of funding, which the proposal, I believe, is due mid-March of this next year. And so we'd really like to see if the commission would support us through a CIA, which is called a Community Involvement Agreement, which just says, basically, it says that the commission supports Taos Alive. And Ricardo has a copy, we didn't bring a whole lot, I'm sorry. But it would just be saying that you support our initiatives through any of the following ways that the commission does. And this really shows the federal government that we have support from our community to move forward and hopefully get us another five years of funding.
Is this something, Mr. Steve, that has to come back to us for approval? We can't do it today, obviously, but...
It's not on the agenda for action.
So we can ask for it to be put on maybe another agenda for action? Okay, that will do, and at least this is an introduction to that. And...
Oh, okay, on the agenda, okay.
Oh, it doesn't have it. So here's a quote from Benjamin Franklin, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." It's easier for us to wanna react to the problems that are happening. There's a story, and I put it on the computer one, but it's not on that one, about a stream where there's people drowning, right? And people are fishing, and they're seeing these people drowning, so they're pulling them out one by one. And one person decides, "Well, let's go look upstream, let's see what's happening upstream, that there's all these people drowning in this river." So they walk upstream and they find that there's a bridge out and people are falling in the river. And so this is just an analogy to show that it's not as easy to jump on the bandwagon of prevention because we don't see the results immediately, but we really need to do that in conjunction with the downstream approaches. So thank you for your time, and here's our contact information in case anybody needs it. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time and your effort.
Thank you. Any last questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, so move for a final minute break. Okay. I'll go ahead and second, Madam Clerk.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, motion to come back?
So move!
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. We will continue with item 7C. This is a presentation regarding Tri County Suicide Prevention Grant. Denise Frank and Sally Warnock, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Denise Frank Dumainiel. Sally Warnock is not able to be here, she's a social worker at Tri County, and she's working, she's over at the hospital as we speak. But Juliana Anastazov is here from University of New Mexico Health Education Regional Office, close enough, the HIRA Office. And so we're really excited to be here today. We have a short presentation about the Taos County being chosen as a pilot county in the entire state of New Mexico for a SAMSA grant, a National Strategies for Suicide Prevention Grant. So before we get into the details of the grant, I'm gonna start with Juliana introducing this next slide, which will become a video.
Thank you, Denise. Good morning, everyone. And my name is Juliana Anastazov, I'm from Chumizal, and I'm the Health Extension Officer in the northern part of the state for the UNM Health Sciences Center. And the Health Sciences Center are all of the clinical, academic, and research programs at the UNM North Campus in Albuquerque. And one of the, my favorite parts of my job is that every summer I get to host a team of pre-med students that are young people from around the state of New Mexico who come to Taos as a team, they live here for the month of June, they shadow with one of our fabulous generous physicians here in town, and they work with one of my community partners on a critical health issue that is a priority for that partner. And this summer in June, our team of young people worked with the Taos County Crisis System of Care Group, which is a wonderful group of individuals and organizations that have been working on this issue for quite a while. And we wanted to share a little bit of the students' work with you as a background to provide some background information to this grant and the services and issues that it will be addressing.
That helped kind of set the stage of what we're about to talk about. My favorite part of that slide, I think, was when it said, "What will it take us to get there?", and then it had the picture of writing a check. And really, we needed funding. And so the good news that we're here to present today is that we got the check for, to create some of those services that we think will help people in crisis and help prevent suicide and other psychiatric hospitalizations and things of that nature. So the crisis system of care, I'm just gonna talk about real briefly, and there are some members of that here. So if you could stand Kirsten, and Fritz, and Carol, Winter, Herbert has been a huge supporter too, Juliana, of course, Paula in the back. So the crisis system of care, many of you know, has been meeting for, going on two years, December 7th, 2012 is our very first meeting. And it's really a community group. It's not one agency, it's not only providers, it's really just people in the community that are concerned about this issue and wanted to help bring services here. So after two years of meeting, and Mike Traheal helped us write a SAMSA grant that last year, unfortunately, we didn't get it, they were only giving three out, but it really put us on the radar, and the crisis system of care has just continued to be on the radar in the state, helped us become the pilot county for this grant. So in September of this year, 2014, the New Mexico Behavioral Health Service Division, which is part of the New Mexico Human Services Department, applied for and was awarded one of five in the nation, a three-year grant for, it's called the National Strategies for Suicide Prevention. It's from the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. It's from the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA. The purpose of this grant is to develop a suicide prevention program at the local level in Taos County to pilot the model that will be developed and then take it to the state to impact policy and sustain and spread the model statewide. So of all of the communities in New Mexico, the Human Services Department chose Taos County because of the work that the Taos County Crisis System of Care had done, really laying the foundation for this. So the funding structure, so again, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration is part of the United States Department of Health and Human Services over in DC. And so the grant is technically to the Behavioral Health Services Division, and then Tri County is the, basically like a subcontractor of that to pilot this locally here. So Kim Hamstra, who is the CEO of Tri County, who was going to do this presentation, is actually at SAMSA right now, at a meeting about this. So we will fill in for her. So why Taos County? We have a few slides here, and we have some handouts that you already have, and you have more of this information in those handouts, so I won't go through all these bullet points. But again, why Taos County was chosen is because of our readiness through the Crisis System of Care's work, and also because our statistics are very sobering when it comes to mental health crises and suicide. We have a significantly higher rate here in Taos County of suicide than the state average, and unfortunately, our state is also at the top of the list nationwide. And specifically, our rate of suicide for adults ages 25 to 64 is, that's our highest suicide rate population. So I won't go through all of those, but here's some more local numbers that just show also Holy Cross Hospital, and looking at their data as far as emergency room visits, the number of mental health visits at the ER is very high. It accounts for roughly 25% of their total ER visits, and that's only if the mental health diagnosis is coded as a primary or secondary diagnosis. So really, all that means is that that would be lower. That's a low ballpark. So what we really wanted to do through the Crisis System of Care is improve our system to give more options for people so that the option, like the video said, is not just jail or the ER, because both of those places are not the most appropriate place to get treatment and to get into recovery. So this grant will support focusing on working-age adults, 25 to 64 years old, focusing on reducing the suicide rate, promoting suicide prevention as a core component of healthcare services, implementing effective clinical and professional practices for assessing suicidal risk and treating those in need. So that's kind of the overview. These are the four initiatives. The initiative will develop a zero-suicide culture, and you have a one-page handout that's from a website. So zero suicide is really a philosophy that even one suicide in a community, in a county, in an area is too many, and that it's not, our goal is not to reduce our suicide rate by 50% or what have you. It's really, our work is not done until we achieve a zero-suicide culture. So to do that, it's about prevention, and it's about training community members. It's also about having more services to deal with the actual crisis, and more for when the person returns home, if they have to leave. So really, having a whole continuum. So the number-one initiative promotes suicide prevention as a core component of healthcare. Number-two, implement effective practices for assessing and treating those at risk for suicide. Number-three, ensure meaningful collaboration with people who have lived experience of suicide. And four, implement strategies to address behavioral health disparities for those with limited access to care. For example, people in rural and frontier areas, culturally diverse populations, and veterans specifically, because they also have a higher rate of suicide than the civilian So what all... crises in the community to, again, if there's another option between jail or the ER, and someone can be, there can be an intervention in the community or in their home, then the studies have also shown there's a three times less risk of being involuntarily hospitalized. If you present with the same symptoms at the ER, you're three times more likely to be psychiatrically hospitalized, which here means going to Vegas, going to Albuquerque, going to Santa Fe, that you cannot be psychiatrically hospitalized here locally. So you're having to leave your community, leave your support system, which makes it even harder. Rather than if you have those same symptoms and someone can respond to you in the setting that you're at, then you're three times less likely to be hospitalized, and you're more likely to engage in recovery. So that's really what this is all about. Taos Community Health and Behavioral Health Providers will screen and assess for co-occurring disorders and suicide risk. So physicians, primary care physicians, behavioral health providers, counselors, psychologists, and agencies, and private practice will be engaged to really make sure that they are screening for suicide risk and co-occurring disorders like substance abuse and other mental health conditions that can increase the risk of suicide. So many places are already doing this, and some more than others, but this will really, I think, help make it more institutionalized and more systematic. Facility discharge staff and care coordinators will be trained on follow-up strategies for high-risk patients, and the mobile crisis team will provide additional follow-up to high-risk individuals. So the mobile crisis team, again, the clinician and the community member that will be able to go out and intervene in real-time, 24/7, face-to-face, will also then, after that initial intervention, no matter what happens, be available to do follow-up. So if the person does require a higher level of care and maybe does need some hospitalization, then they will be there to really help coordinate their care when they're coming back and help ease that transition. Or if it's something that can be managed within the community, then the mobile crisis team will be the point to really help make sure that all the services are in place. And that's really what we've been lacking to date, is having kind of a central point person, especially in crisis. There might be multiple providers, multiple people involved, but it's really important to have someone kind of holding the ball there. And so the mobile crisis team will be able to do that. Training will be provided to ensure quality of direct service implementation. So UNM, the main campus, is a partner in this grant with the Human Services Department, and they will be providing a lot of training on these screenings and assessment tools, and then also on treatment for area providers and physicians, mental health clinicians, as well as community members through Mental Health First Aid, which has already been going on. Juliana is a trainer of Mental Health First Aid and has been doing those workshops throughout the last two years, at least. And then the lessons that we learn from doing all of this here in Taos County will be shared A very important, I think the most critical part, actually, of this is incorporating lived experience and community member expertise in the program design. So we kind of have the general idea of what we want this to look like and what it can look like, but we really need to have people from the community and people that have lived experience with mental health conditions, or family or friends of people with mental health conditions, to be part of this on a steering committee. And that steering committee is really what will help create the policies and the protocols to make sure that this is actually something that the community will benefit from and that will utilize and that will call upon. So this is going to be very important. We haven't set our next, or our first project steering committee meeting yet. Things are just getting rolling on this. We were just notified at the end of September that Taos County was awarded this grant through the Human Services Department, so things are kind of getting up and running. So the steering committee will be formed shortly. And the anticipated results of all of this, again, is to create a zero-suicide culture, to institute universal screenings, as I've talked about, to conduct formal assessments so that if someone does show as being at risk on a screening, that there's then a formal assessment that can be done to determine the level of risk and help determine the appropriate level of intervention. So again, bringing more evidence-based to things that are happening some places, not all the places, but really making it more evidence-based. To conduct evidence-based practice interventions, an example of that is cognitive behavioral therapy suicide prevention, which is a specific type of treatment of counseling that the mobile crisis team and others in the community, even private practice clinicians, will be able to be trained in this. And so it'll bring local trainings of these evidence-based up here to Taos, which is really a big deal in a rural community. To keep our social work and counseling and psychologist licensures, we have to get so many continuing education credits, and they rarely happen locally. And that's just how it is in rural areas. So to bring that up here, I think it'll help get everyone kind of more on the same page as well. To have rapid follow-up is another anticipated result. So for adults who have experienced a suicidal crisis, attempted suicide, or been discharged from an emergency department or inpatient unit, or made a crisis call, they will have access to increased care transition and care coordination services through the mobile crisis team. To have a mobile crisis and follow-up team, like I've talked about. To reduce access to lethal means, another anticipated result. So this initiative will use three strategies, which are evidence-based as well. CALM, which is counseling on access to lethal means, enhanced prescription drug take-back, and a buddy program with which to execute advanced directives regarding gun safety and suicide. And then the last slide there, to provide suicide prevention training to community and clinical service providers. So again, this talks about Mental Health First Aid, where in Taos County, there's already been at least 135 individuals that have been trained in Mental Health First Aid. It's a one-day, eight-hour workshop. It's similar to going to first aid or CPR class, but it focuses on mental health conditions and crises, and really training community members on how to recognize mental health conditions and how to intervene and what to do, how to call for help. And so now that we will have the mobile crisis team, that will be very helpful because it'll increase people's options, too. And just a large thank you to the County Commission, who has been a longtime and critical supporter of the Taos County Crisis System of Care, which again, helped to bring these new services to Taos County residents and visitors alike. So is there anything else that anyone wanted to add from the system of care?
How does your program interface with compassionate rights determining?
Compassionate rights determining? We haven't talked about that at all, so that would be something that...
...in conversation.
Yeah, that can definitely be something maybe the steering committee can look at. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Broney?
Thank you, Chairman. And I just want to ask a couple of questions and just want to make sure, you know, it's great to promote suicide prevention and training, but are we, and I noticed a number of trainings that you already done and a number of trainings that you continue to do, but are we, starting with our front line, you know, our police department, our sheriff's department, our E-911 dispatch, you know, we have a brand-new dispatch, want to make sure, because those are the life link, you know, because those are the ones that see it first before most of the physicians and anybody else. So are those people going to be trained on the front line so that they know what to expect, what, you know, how to refer people? You know, somebody calls in on E-911 and said, you know, are, is that training going to be offered to those people if they haven't been trained already? I know some of our staff has been trained, but, you know, additional training to make sure that the front line is actually trained.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a really good point, and definitely, yes, that is part of this and a component for this. I didn't list all the different trainings on there, but there's at least five that I won't remember on the top of my head. I'm sure they're in the packet here, that are trainings for different levels of professions, really. So there's Safe Talk is one specifically for, like, front-desk receptionists at clinics or really anywhere, but someone who's just kind of answering the phone. And then there's other training specific for first responders, and that is going to be critical. And that's where the fun, yet hard, part of this will be, is getting everyone on the same page and creating those protocols of how do you call on the mobile crisis team? What is, you know, the parameters to do that? So they will definitely be involved in creating all of those protocols, and through that will also be getting the training. I also know that the Taos Police Department submitted a grant for CIT training, and I'm not sure if they've heard back if they've gotten that or not. I think what's hard that we've seen is that for first responders, because of their scheduling and because there's often, there's not a lot of backup usually, that to have them do long trainings, even a day, can be really hard just on their schedules. So we'll be working to try to fit that in. And I know Inside Out, which is a peer-support agency here in town, also brought Mental Health First Aid to the detention center and trained, I believe, 14 staff there. So it's definitely been slowly getting out, and I think this will help make that more targeted and really blanket everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ma'am, you know, we got a big problem, and I don't know if this is part of it, the gorge, bridge, you know? You say you got the mobile crisis team. We got people that come from, I don't know, Albuquerque from, oh, you know. How do we handle that? I mean, we've just gotten all kinds of people jumping off the bridge.
Right. Yeah, so tourists, which account for at least half of the suicide deaths that we can account for thus far this year, if that makes sense, that's a huge problem. And so what's the steering committee, what's been written into part of their job, is to think of ways to address that. So some things that have been brought up thus far is trying to do some outreach to hotels, to front staff there, that maybe they can, you know, get the Mental Health First Aid training to see, you know, kind of help if a crisis does come in or someone's checking in that they're a little worried about, that they would have the skills to maybe engage and talk with them a little bit more to see if there's, if they can refer them for any assistance. So that's just one idea, and so I think it'll be interesting to see what the steering committee comes up with. Regarding the bridge specifically, this grant does not target the bridge specifically. The Gorge Bridge Safety Network, though, is another separate community group that is really working on that issue. So for people that are really wanting to focus specifically on the bridge, then we kind of refer people to talk to them, because that's what their sole mission is.
And what, I've never heard of this group before till now.
Curly O'Connor is the name of the woman who started that group in memory of her son who committed suicide over the bridge. I want to say it was April of this year. And so she has been really active in working with the Department of Transportation, I believe, and believe also the Department of Tourism, to try to get something to help at the Gorge Bridge. So the phones that are being talked about being installed there is really coming from her work, not necessarily from the Crisis System of Care, but we obviously stay in contact so we know what's going on. But that, they have a website that I don't have on me, but I can make sure you get that.
And I think I did see that on the Taos News, a little portion of it, but never have I heard any more about it, you know?
And that's really, you know, it's nice to be in this presentation after Taos Alive Two talking about environmental strategies, and that there's so many strategies that need to be employed for substance abuse as well as mental health and suicide crises. And so that, the Gorge Bridge is really an example, more of an environmental strategy, and this is more of a direct service strategy. So it's kind of all links together.
Sometimes some of these individuals don't show a sign, you know? I've had a Vietnam veteran pass on here about two months, three months ago in my district, and you could have told, you could have told that he was down, you know what I mean? It was all of a sudden, just happened.
And I think that's an important piece to bring up when we talk about zero-suicide culture, is that there also has to be a balance that this theory talks about, that you cannot save everyone. And so our goal is zero suicides, but it's also not about if there is a suicide blaming a clinician or blaming family for not catching it, or, you know, that there, we have to do the best we can, and our goal will always be zero, but it is, it's an extremely complex phenomenon, and so there's, there needs to be a lot of compassion, I think, for everyone involved in this.
Commissioner Blank, you're on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you've considered this yet or figured it out, but the Detention Center, Men's Homeless Shelter, those are places where often people come and have mental health issues. Have you figured... come and have mental health issues. Have you figured out, excuse me, have you figured out how you're going to identify them, work with those groups?
We've just gotten in touch with Jeff at the Taos Men's Shelter, and he is very excited to be part of the crisis system of care. So I'm hoping that he may even be on the steering committee, because I, I think you're absolutely right. That is a great place that we need to make sure we have outreach to. And then from there, I think that is a part of what the steering committee will do, is can we implement these screenings at the detention center, at the men's shelter, and if so, how do we do that in a way that is still appropriate for the settings?
Right. Yeah, it would obviously require some work with the detention center to integrate that, but it seems like it would be an important part of the program. Just congratulations for getting the grant and for being prepared for it. I think it's going to do a lot of good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any items, I'm sure we'll break for lunch, but are there any items that we need to, to move up, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Malone? And I did want to amend the agenda real quick for at least a good five minutes to allow Mr. Trujillo to, to speak on behalf of a concern that he has, realizing that we can't make any decisions. Mr. Trujillo?
Okay.
Mr. Sanger here and Richard. That are going to present that? Okay.
Thank you for giving me this time. I apologize for being ill-prepared, but anyways.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
For the record.
Thank you.
This is in a nutshell, basically just see this.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I went to the 25th Annual SECA Association Meeting, and anyway, they gave us these, these brief little PowerPoints. And one of my concerns is this development here that's happening in Albuquerque. And yeah, basically, how would it affect us? Is it going to affect us? Because they're acquiring water rights from all these different districts. They do not have adjudicated water, but basically, there's a meeting tomorrow, and I'm going up there on, basically, you know, you guys represent different districts. I'm going up there representing all of us, stating that, no, we have an issue there, and that these guys, you know, have, they haven't done an environmental impact study, or, you know, they're, anyway, all in all, if you guys read it, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'm going to network with the lady that's spearheading this, and see if she could come down and do it for the 16th and, and do a presentation so you guys could be, you know, basically properly informed. But what I want to do tomorrow, when I go up there, also drop by Hooters, by the way. Got to make it worthwhile, right?
Yeah.
Anyway. Anyway, but all in all, I want to be able to explain to them that I did present it to the, to the commission, and, you know, how do we think, you know, how, everybody will be impacted by this, because our whole SECA system diverts into Rio Grande. But when they, when they pass this a beta settlement, they want to put meters everywhere. All the people that ain't water banking, the pueblo, you know, they're not on board. They want to, you know, they're going to get like 50 million from the settlement, but they want to commoditize this water instead of, you know, it staying in the community and it, you know, for the intended use of, for the land. Anyway, long story short, like I say, I'm willing to tell them tomorrow that, you know, you guys are going to have a class action lawsuit on your case, regardless with or without you guys. But all in all, thank you for your time, and I hope this kind of, you know, puts it in a nutshell. And I guess that's it.
So the contact person for this...
Well, this lady is the contact on the bottom. It's, it wasn't a very good copy, but, but that number goes to her husband or her, her, her name isn't on there, but basically, I guess there's a website, too. Like I say, I've been so, I got 50 irons in the fire, and this is one of 50. And that's why I'm kind of, just kind of winging it here.
So it's called the Santolina Development?
It's just a master plan, and what it is, I mean, you're looking at 15, 20,000, $15,000, 20,000 homes, and they're going to be looking for, you know, 40 million gallons per day. And they don't have those waters yet, but I guarantee it, they're going to suck them from everywhere they can. I mean, Colorado, they're going to pull them from Taos. I mean, any, any, all this whole SECA system is going to be affected by it. And, you know, it's a huge concern, because people that even don't have water rights don't realize that the SECA system charges this system. I mean, it charges the groundwaters, which affect the wellwaters. So all in all, you know, everybody needs to be concerned about this.
Okay.
So that, that's really the bottom line here, you know, that's, I mean, I live by simple rules, but one of them, you know, screw it, their water.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is the, if we can amend the agenda again. Mr. Archuleta, you were suggesting to move up to item 8D. This is the acceptance of the donation of Flight of the Wind, or of Wind by the Ted Agri Estate?
So move to amend the agenda, Chairman.
Okay.
Sir?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, Mr. Archuleta, go ahead. Commissioner Sanchez is actually going to be presenting this? Okay, very good. Sorry about that, Mr. Archuleta.
Chairman, Commissioners, today, we're before, we're here before you to ask the acceptance of the Ted Agri piece of art called Flight of the Wind. Mr. Sanger is here, and Ms. Ilwes Olonia, to like to say some words for this piece of sculpture. I know Commissioner Barone has been out there, I've been out there. It's a beautiful, iconic piece that'll, I think will fit wonderfully on our, on our campus. It looks like we're going to have a little bit of money left over from what we had budgeted for our centerpiece piece of art. And so we'd like to, the Arts Committee would like to recommend that we accept this piece, and upon the estate clearing it all up, hopefully, maybe this spring, we could relocate it to, to our complex. Mr. Sanger?
And Richard, we've been able to figure out how we can move it, and, and...
There's, there's a couple of different suggestions. They have, they've had Manuel Medina out there looking at it, and their suggestion was to take the concrete apart. If they're going to take the concrete apart, we'd have to construct a new base over here. My only concern, taking the concrete apart out there, the piece of sculpture, I think, would probably have to be supported, because it, that's what really holds it together. So there'll be some continuing discussions. I think putting a new base out here would be nice, would actually make it really nice, and, but I believe we'll probably have to take the sculpture off of the existing base before we just take the other base apart. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of all tied together. So we need to look at it real carefully. It'd be great to bring it in one piece and put it, remount it on a new concrete base, and that might be possible. I know originally, we had talked about using the original base to keep it all original, but if we, if the state is willing to allow us to destroy that base, then we could do a new base here, and we may be able to bring it in one piece laying down. I'm going to go out and take some more measurements with a surveying instrument and see if we can lay it down on trailer without having to lower telephone lines, power lines, or take it apart. So there's still some more research to be done.
Okay. And I just, and Chairman, I just want to thank the Agri family. I think it is a beautiful piece. I think it would really accent what is here at the county now, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm just here as the, an attorney for the estate, and I, I'd like to just give some time to Elise Olonia Waters to explain a little bit more about Ted and his place in history on beyond Taos, but Taos as well. Elise, please.
Hi, good afternoon. I don't know if in your last meeting, you received a bio on Ted. Did you, you have that? So if you've read that, I won't go through it line by line, but I do want to tell you a little bit about the work that I've been doing. I'm a certified appraiser for the International Society of Appraisers, and was asked to inspect the work of Ted Agri about a year ago. And it has taken a year now plus. We're about to conclude at looking at all the artwork. And walking onto the property is, as you have been, it is a remarkable estate. It is impossible to summarize a man's life in nine, for 97 years of creativity. He started out as a child prodigy at about age seven in New York, and those were his roots. He had a very artistic family. He got scholarships to work at museums in New York, to study there and further his own creativity. So later, he began to work commercially, and also for the WPA. He did different art projects there, working for the post office and the library. And then he enlisted and went to war, went to World War II, where he was stationed in New Guinea. And there, he was doing mapping, historical, strategical maps, for which we still have some in, within the estate, and paintings as well, that were actually saved and secured. So all of this is part of the estate. So after that time period, he came, of course, back to the United States and re-entered the commercial world in order to survive as an artist. People probably know, it's, it's a tough road. It's not a guarantee, because you have academic training that you can survive. So he began to teach in different parts of the country. And in 1950, he landed in Taos, New Mexico. He actually, he chose Taos, New Mexico as his home. As he began to situate here, he lived on a property where there was no running water, there was no electric. I think he was neighbors with Agnes Martin. He began to, he had a background in painting, but he began to sculpt. He had a lot of interest in civil rights issues, and he was in his, through his sculpting, he began to work out some of his feelings about that. The Harvard Museum has a, a beautiful piece called Struggle that shows the civil rights struggle in wood. And if you haven't seen that, that's one to, to really take a look at. So even though he wasn't making a big financial career for himself in Taos, he began to give back to the community immediately. He began to get involved with teaching children under the National Endowment of the Arts. He was given a grant. And that is something I wanted to point out. Let's see, this was in the 70s. He helped pilot art programs and for grades three through 12, reaching 2,000 students in 12 schools in Taos, Rancho, Oroo Seco, Cuesta, and Piñasco. So that's a, a pretty remarkable stamp on our community, I think. So one of his statements, which I think is very interesting, following the presentations on drug abuse or preventing Taos Alive, and then the suicide prevention, that what Ted was doing early on was also very, much ahead of his time, because he was working with children, and he was making his impact in this community to help children use their creative potential. According to Ted, "Learning to think in 3D goes far beyond the creation of sculpture. The creative process trains the person to think and act creatively in solving problems in everyday life." And I think this is a big piece of what ties in all that's been discussed so far this morning, and what we will continue to discuss. So then he also went on, you may be very familiar with El Viveron, which is a part of the fiestas, and, and he helped renovate and get that going, and be a big piece of fiestas. What else he has done, he received in 96, the Governor's Award of Excellence in the Art for working with unrecognized artists of all cultures, ages, and socioeconomic groups. So that, too, shows his very benevolent nature. And when I walked out on his property for the first time, it was, it was interesting, because there were people living there. There was a man who was, I think, partially dressed, and he was doing something off to the side, and another man living in the garage, and, and the, but these were all artists who have come and gone and been a very integral part of Ted's life. So he's been very inclusive of this community. And the piece that we're talking about today, Flight of Wind, is a very organic piece. I think it was inspired by dust devils that he saw on the plane. So he had a remarkable envision, both culturally and aesthetically, for Taos. And it was always his vision to have his property be a home for artists, where they could come and live and work, and to have people enjoy his sculpture. So to have it placed here would be exactly within his intent, and certainly a, a credit to all who were involved in it. So thank you very much. If you have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer.
What is the, the total height of the piece?
I think it's like 32, hang on one second, let me find it. It's 34 feet.
Cool. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, ma'am, I don't know if you can answer this, or if you can even give us this, what's the value of this art?
Well, that is the big question. I did a preliminary, which is not normally what appraisers do. In fact, we usually don't come out and even speak until the appraisal is completely through. But right now, we're looking probably around the 3, 350, $350,000 mark.
Bet. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Depending on the vote of the commission, we have one more step to do. We need court approval. But I can't go for court approval until the commission agrees to accept the donation.
So move to second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. And before we move any further, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my niece, Maya Martinez, and my little great niece, Zafania, who's in the back. Welcome.
Thank you.
I would also thank you very much. I really appreciate all of the work that has taken place into getting this done, and it's, it's quite an honor to have a piece by Mr. Agri in the grounds of our county complex.
Thank you so much.
What, what else did you need, Mr.?
That's it. We're done.
We're done?
There was, Ms. Archuleta, there was one more item that you wanted to hear. I believe we're going to break for lunch here shortly. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if the will of the commission, item 8B, would be the item, if possible, right before lunch. Okay, and that is discussion, considerations, decisions regarding the approval of real estate agreement between Ronald John Vehill and Michaela Renee Vehill in Taos County for the purchase of real estate.
So Chairman, we, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to hear that next.
Okay.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll do so. Mr. Malone? Mr. Malone will be handling this.
For a fire station, so move to approve, Chairman.
Let's, let's go.
I know, I just go, go ahead.
Barone just cut my presentation in half. This is for the purchase of a half acre of land from the Vehills, who've agreed to sell it to us for $12,000 for establishing a fire station in San Cristobal. The San Cristobal Fire District has some money from the state for construction of a building, but that money can't be used for buying the land. And we need to own the land anyway. So this is a purchase agreement that if the commission approves it, we will enter into with the Vehills for the purchase of this land.
For how much?
For $12,000 for the half acre.
And it's been surveyed and processed, taken through the quiet title suit process?
Well, there, the purchase agreement provides that there needs to be title insurance. It's not a matter of quiet title, but of receiving title insurance from the title company, and it has been surveyed.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Malone, at one time, I know, the Corlevas had donated some property. Fabi, do you know what happened to that property that they had donated for the fire department?
Welcome, Ms. Romero, if you want to state your name for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Fabi Romero. Mr. Corleavas drew his offer of the, of the donated property. We, we think the location that the Vehills are selling the county is much better... We think the location that the Vehills are selling the county is much better anyway. It's situated exactly in the middle of the valley. Felipe Corlevas' property was off in the hills and would be harder to access.
And Fabi, to get in and out, is it, would that would not be a problem?
No. At the moment, the property has an easement that runs along the property of the community, where the head start is, the community center. There's an easement, so the fire trucks would exit into the easement and out into the road.
And how many acres was that, Fabi?
Half acre.
Half acre. And can you put a septic, or how are you going to do that? You can't put a septic on a half inch.
No, we're not. I think the solution that Mr. Richard Sanchez had recommended and that we thought would work is to put an enclosed system.
Holding tank?
Yes.
And on that holding tank, who would be responsible for the emptying of it? I don't think they hold that, I don't know how many gallons, but I know you got to have the truck go in and empty it out every so often, correct?
The fire department, the San Cristobal Fire Department would be responsible. We don't think it'll be a problem. The septic will rarely be used. We're not going to hang out there a lot.
Okay. I just wanted to find out who's going to be responsible for the emptying of the holding tank.
The fire department would be.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I'm, were you done? There's money within that, the money will be coming from where, Steve?
Actually, Mr. Sanchez will go ahead and.
Okay.
Chairman Commissioners, I'd have to defer that to our finance director. I had actually tried to check with the State Fire Marshal's Office to see if I could use actually some of my budget. That was not allowable through them, but I know that our finance director had set aside some funding for that.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, we did set aside some money from our 103, the excess of the GRT. At the time, I think the Commissioners had asked us to explore a bigger purchase, so we put aside $15,000. So this falls within the amount that we had put aside.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this can't come from fire excise?
It potentially could come from fire excise. We just added San Cristobal to our fire excise allotments. And basically, how that works is they accrue their money on a monthly basis, and they haven't gotten to the point where they have enough money accrued to do this purchase. Either way, it would come from the county coffers because the state fire protection funds are not allowed because they're not recognized at this time. So we're purchasing the property. Maybe in future purchases, we may want to explore how the fire excise is used and how it's allotted out to the different departments in order to be able to use it in the future. But at this time, it wouldn't be a viable option.
And Leandro, in saying that, could we not make a loan to purchase the property and then recap that afterwards?
Potentially, Commissioner, but at the time, the way we allocate toward the districts is equally. So we give half the money to EMS, and then we disperse the rest amongst the fire districts.
Depending on their ratings?
Just, no, actually, just straight across. So I believe we have 13 fire districts now. We've already, for this budget year, dispersed, divided by 13. So if we were to borrow, we'd borrow from one of the other districts, which might create an issue at this time. So I think going forward, we would like to try and maybe set some money aside in the next budget year for purposes just like that, in order to borrow from ourselves, in order to get the project done.
And Chairman, I think this is one of them, great things, again, within our community, and hopefully will lower our ratings for insurance, the ISO rating, hopefully will come down in that area, and I move for approval.
Discussion.
I'll go ahead.
Leandro, would that, would that be the county property?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Chairman, I just reiterate what Commissioner Baroni said about the importance of this and how much I'm in favor of it and appreciative of everybody who's worked on it. I know, just to get back on the fire excise for a second, I know that one of the, one of the thoughts that we had earlier on by hiring Mr. Sanchez was that there would be some centralization of fire excise tax because there's some surpluses built up in a variety of districts. And so I hope we can move towards that original goal. Obviously, we have to allocate portions of fire excise tax to every, every district so that they have enough equipment and what they need to do their work. But it, you know, we had heard in the past that there were certain surpluses that have built up, and it would be nice to be able to use that for other projects, you know, that benefit the community as a whole. So thank you.
And Chairman, and just going along with that, Commissioner Blankenorn is, you know, buying power too, because if you're buying for 13 districts versus buying for one district, you have buying power, so you can, you should be able to get a better rate on things.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, so what is the wishes of the commission?
Break for lunch.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. Motion to come back to session. Okay, Madam Clerk. Present.
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much. We will move on to, let's see, item 8A, discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of the Community WI Project Agreement Number 15, CD 05100, to purchase equipment for the law enforcement agencies in Taos County. Mr. Herbert Valdez, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commission, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone. I'm here to present the grant agreement for these coming years, CD WI project. There is $7,376 that they have awarded Taos County for this project, and primarily what we use this money for is to purchase equipment for the line enforcement agencies throughout Taos County. Any questions?
What was the total amount?
It was $7,376.
Is that both town and county, or is that just?
This is split up between all the agencies, primarily those ones that work with the DWI Planning Council, and those are like Red River Marshal's Office, Cuesta Police Department, the Town of Taos Police, the Sheriff's Office here, and the State Police.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? If not, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. We'll move on to item 8C. We had covered 8B already. 8C is discussion, considerations, decisions regarding approval, the construction contract for Northern Mountain Constructors for the Upper Yano Road. Ms. Elsa, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commission. Before you, you have a contract for Northern Mountain Constructors to furnish hall place and conduct compaction testing on Upper Yano Road. This is one of the last projects we need done to complete the FY 1314 LGRF grant. I still have not talked to Mr. Perovich. These were procured through quotations since this is considered a small purchase. And at this point in time, this is the only company that did bid on it that actually qualifies with the minimum specifications New Mexico DOT requires with the base course of the material being placed down on the actual road. Currently, right now, this is only for one mile of road. We only have enough money to do one mile of road with base course with a three-inch base. So I don't know if you have any questions.
One mile, three inches?
Three inches compacted down. It'll be two lanes. It'll be 22 feet wide, which is the drivable width. Of course, the road is wider because of the signs and the barges and so forth, but it'd be the drivable width. So it would extend about halfway of that road from 76 to approximately to House 100, which is about, and Commissioner Duran knows where this is at, by Ivan Tofoya's house around that area, is where the end of the project would end up.
And do you expect to do the work this year?
We expect to get it done before December 19th because all funds and reimbursement has to be in before December 31st, or we will lose the $58,000.
And do you think, Commissioner, the weather's going to allow?
So move, Chairman.
Second, but just discussion, if we can't get it done up there because it gets cold, we have a road down here.
Worst-case scenario with Mother Nature than at that point in time. If anything happens between now and the 19th, obviously before the 16th, if weather does not permit us, then I will come back with a resolution to ask for an extension on these funds, so at least we're allowed to, a little more time in between that to try to get the project done. But with the confidence in Northern Mountain, Mr. Perovich, he told me straight out that he could make it happen, but it's going to be fairly quick here.
And the road crews have to prepare.
The road, they're going to be hauling, Northern Mountain's going to haul it. Our road crews, the only thing they're going to have to prepare for is we're going to actually be doing the flagging and putting out signage and ensuring that traffic is going to be moving smoothly as they complete that project. It should only take no more than three days, he told me, maybe two the tops, if he can get enough trucks to haul as much as possible and get it done right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yes. I'll abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. We've already covered all of the other items. We'll move on to item 9B. This is the discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of Resolution Number 2014-53, Resolution Amending Resolution 2013-63 Establishing Legal Holidays, Operating Hours for Taos County Offices, and Closing of County Offices for the Calendar Year 2014.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, at the last commission meeting, we were asked to take a look at the possibility of changing the holidays for the December 14th, which is Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, which is December 24th to December 31st. We would exchange those two dates for Friday, December 26th, and January 2nd, 2014, which would both be the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's. And so we're coming to the commission to request that move so that the staff can have a four-day holiday instead of having to come back to work on those Fridays.
Don't move to approve. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, we'll move on to item 9C then, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding approval of Taos County Ordinance 2014-7, repealing and replacing Taos County Ordinance 2010-5. Mr. Edward Martinez, Solid Waste Department, and Abby Martinez.
Chairman, they're not here, but I can handle this so we can keep moving.
Okay.
Is this the tax for knee 911 for the whole county?
I'm afraid not, not this year.
Not yet.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is the amended ordinance for solid waste that only addresses a very narrow part of the solid waste ordinance. It changes the procedure by which the commission can change the rates that are charged. And you've been provided in your packets, both a black line and a red line version. What has been done is Section 13, which is the actual rates that are charged, has been changed so that instead of only being able to change the rates during the first quarter of each year, first quarter of each fiscal year, the commission, by voting, it would still have to come before the commission, the commission would have to vote, can change the rates at any time that it deems inappropriate. And then the actual rates, instead of incorporating them into the body of the ordinance, they're made in appendix, so you don't have to amend the whole ordinance every time there's a change. This is, this doesn't make any changes in the rates. It would allow a future commission to do that.
Don't move to approve.
Does this have to be a public hearing because it's an ordinance?
This is a public hearing.
Okay. This is part of the.
It's been noticed, it's been noticed in the paper and so forth.
So I do need to open it up for public discussion?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, before we have a motion. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak for or against? No one for or against that wishes to speak? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then at this point and allow for further discussion before we move on to a motion. Edward? Edward, Abby, nothing else?
Well, the reason we're up here is to amend this ordinance of the number 2010-5 to repeal it to 2014-7. Did we bring, and that is just on a scene about raising our prices. The van fill, they've actually raised our tonnage by $5 a ton for our tipping fees. Also, you know, we did purchase two new roll-offs, which is another reason that, you know, we would like to raise some of these prices because we do have a $350,000 loan that we do have to pay for our aging trucks that have been pretty outdated already. They're, you know, 300,000 miles, and they needed some to be replaced already. Another reason was we are a self-sustained department, and we do, you know, we do pay our own bills, and, you know, we haven't had a raise in my department in at least, you know, quite a number of years. The tipping fees also, I mean, our rates haven't gone up in at least eight years. So we're, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get this resolution so that we can pay for the stuff that we need to, you know, keep this department running, you know, keeping it afloat.
movements to the department. Okay, anything else, Mr. Archuleta?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Malone? That's it? Okay, is there any motion?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we'll move on to item 9D. This is discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the approval of Taos County Ordinance 2014-8, an ordinance adopting a Taos County grocery seat tax.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is the final step in the process that you've been engaged in for quite some time now in basically repurposing the Third 1/8, which was adopted previously in 1988 and was limited to use for indigent healthcare. The repeal of the 1988 statute went before the voters, and at the general election, they approved its repeal. This ordinance would then take its place if you pass it today. If you don't pass it, then there's simply no Third 1/8 because it's now been repealed effective July 1st. And this is dedicated to general purposes, which will allow future commissions to use those funds for the things that it deems having the greatest priority rather than limiting it only to indigent healthcare.
So what you're saying is, you can use it for whatever?
For any legitimate government purpose, obviously, but for general purposes. The dedication in this newly adopted ordinance, if you pass it, it won't be effective till July either. Both the repeal of the previous ordinance and this newly adopted ordinance would both be effective on July 1st, the beginning of the new fiscal year.
And how much would it generate?
You know, I'd have to defer to Leandro. My understanding is that currently it's in the range of $800,000, but.
Roughly, roughly $800,000 based on last year's revenues.
But it'd generate every year. Missionary, where am I, roads?
You're going to have to run again, Commissioner.
It's also a public hearing because it's an adoption of an ordinance, so the chairman needs to go through that procedure.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda for today? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move on to discussion. There's a motion by Commissioner Dudon to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
I would just, before we kick the vote, and I'm just being facetious, Tom. I would just, before we kick the vote, and I'm just being facetious, Tom.
I know, I know, Mayor.
It's just an opportunity that, you know, this is money just being repurposed, and this is money that we could actually have probably repurposed and put out for maybe E-911, and it would have benefited the whole community, you know, from Red River. I know, Steve. I just thought I'd put it out there. But yes, it's a good idea that, you know, this $800,000 would be in, you know, it would open it up to the commission's wishes to how they want to use it. You know, if, you know, we had shortfalls in any of the departments, or we have additional roads that we want to move forward on, or libraries that we want to support, or the ancianos, it would lend to those different entities. So I think it's well thought out and it's a, it's a good use of the grocery seat tax.
Thank you, Commissioner Barone. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to Department Matters, item 10, 10A. Update on the Senior Citizens Program. Mr. Michael Trujillo, Director, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'd like to thank the audience, and we do have some members of our senior program here present today also. I'd like to acknowledge them, thank you for coming. As you know, Taos County took over the senior program on July 1st, effective July 1st, and our mission is to provide supportive nutritional and volunteer opportunities to the elderly for the purpose of enhancing their quality of life and as a deterrent to institutionalization. The goals of our organization will be to ensure that all eligible participants will have an equal opportunity to access the services provided by the local government agency. We will strive to offer ongoing services as intended by using existing human and facility resources and affirm that we will not discriminate against any eligible individual who desires to utilize its services because of sex, race, color, national origin, religion, disability, social, and/or economic status. The transition, in November of 2013, AAA, quasi-government who is contracted by the state to oversee the senior programs in the stadium access, asked Taos County to take over the former ancianos program. Taos County officially started the transition process on February 2014. When AAA asked Taos County to take over the nonprofit organization, it was because the nonprofit was having difficulty meeting the criteria that was part of their contract with AAA and were noncompliant. They had various problems with accountability and various other issues that had been ongoing for the last several years. In May and June of 2014, the Ancianos Inc. was out of money and was ready to close the centers until the county stepped up to the plan and gave them $12,000, and AAA gave them an additional funds to also assist with feeding their seniors, our seniors. Taos County also gave an additional $54,657 for the 2014 fiscal year. As you can see, we had our staff from the planning department, our director from the planning department, staff from the planning EMS, and of course, myself. During the transition, Taos County employees from the EMS planning and maintenance department also helped, along with myself, assisted the ancianos program with a preparation of meals and maintenance so that the center would not close down because some employees of the ancianos program were placed on leave due to no funds available to pay them. During this time, also their main freezer broke down, and I asked Mr. Bob Draper from Phoenix Mechanical to assist in repairing the freezer, and he did at no cost to the ancianos, and it would have been an additional $2,000 if he would have charged the nonprofit. So publicly, I'd like to make a public thanks to Mr. Bob Draper and Phoenix Mechanical for their assistance during that time. They were a great support to us. As you can see on the next page, we have federal, state, and local funding, okay? In 2013, 2014, the revenue for the Ancianos Inc. was 651,248. In 2014, 2015, our revenue was lifted up to, has increased to 735,749. Expanded, and the expenditures were the same for both years. Projected to be the same for, you know, well, not the same for both years, but 651,248 for 2013, 2014, and 735,749. Our county match was given in June of 2014 of $12,000 to assist the ancianos so they wouldn't close down. The projected income at that time was $70,587. Again, for the fiscal year 2013, 2014, 2015, our expenditures increased to 735,749. Taos County gave for the new fiscal year $54,657, and of course, we based our projected income on last year's numbers because we had no really numbers to go on. So the federal and state increase is 84,501 over last year, but this increase covers, only covers PERA, which is a condition of employment and insurance for employees. It still left us with a $10,530 shortfall because the actual cost was $95,031 for these other costs, which was para and the insurance claims, so the county absorbed that cost also. When we took over operations on July 2014, our beginning food and supply inventory was very minimal, and we had to purchase $14,815 worth of food and supplies in July to begin operations for the four sites. As you can see by the graphs that are showing on the screen, our purchases have declined except for the month of October when we served 6,119 meals. Our average per plate cost is $2.12, which is below the state average of $2.30. So we've tried to find some efficiencies there to try to save money to keep the program's operational. Our meal variance is at 9%, which is below the state average of 12%, which means our waste of food is very minimal. When we have an excess in congregant meals, we utilize them for home-delivered frozen meals. So as you can see on the next page, our food cost for the four sites year-to-date is at 21.66%, which is a very good food cost. Our supply cost was 3.51%, which is pretty good. So our actual total in food and supply cost was 25.16%. And as you can see, we're averaging $2.12 for cost per plate, and our cost for supply per plate is 46 cents. Fortunately, we've already closed, on the next side of the screen there, you see our food and supply expenditures and budget. On our total food purchases for NSIP, congregant, and home delivery, we've already expended 92% of that budget because we've increased our units. Our produce budget is at 9%, raw food purchases are at 76%. The reason our produce, our solos, we've got a lot of contributions and donations, which has helped. So we're trying to find efficiencies there. People have donated produce to us. And on the bottom of the page, you have our actual cost to provide service, and this includes our congregant meals, which is $8.88 per unit, home-delivered meals, which is $9.12 per unit, our transportation, which is $6.93 per unit, our homemaker is $24.43 per unit, our respite caregivers of the elders is $16.42 per unit. So the average cost, because our total budget was $861,303, our average cost for the entire program to provide services is $9.84 per unit. Our average, on the next page, our average monthly units for all the sites are, it's obvious that we've gone over. Unfortunately, when we took over the program in July, when we took over the program, we were given an additional 3,500 units that weren't budgeted by AAA. We've tried to address this issue. Unfortunately, that was increased, and they didn't include that amount in the budget. So we're eating that cost. We're over, actually, between our, our actual units that are contracted with AAA, we're actually over 2,019.33 units. So we're increasing, I mean, we're providing services and increasing our services because of the costs associated with our vehicles that are in need of repair. Matter of fact, we just had an accident the other day. We were hit and it wasn't our fault, it wasn't the county's fault or the driver's fault, but we had a vehicle that was, that's now down, it needs repairs. So I'm down six vehicles. So I've had to put like a moratorium on providing more transportation services because we don't have the vehicles to provide these services, enough vehicles. I had one go down yesterday again too, so now I'm down seven. But we're maintaining, we're doing what we can with what we got. And on the next page, you see, and this is an example of how our routes work. In June of 2014, 2013, 2014, when we, you know, when we took over in July, this midtown route, which borders extraterritorial zone, was 27 stops, okay? Our total, our total daily route miles was 24.19 miles. The actual cost for fuel, daily fuel, you know, $6.54. Total meals on wheels served on this route daily was 33. Average total meals served on midtown route was 231. Average monthly meals served on this midtown route in the beginning of the year when we took over was 924 meals at a cost of $8,426.88. Total service hours to provide this route was two hours and 21 minutes. If you look on the next page, this same route is now increased to 42 stops, which it's increased. And you can see on the map, it shows that most of this route is in the ETZ zone, the midtown route. This is one of our largest routes. So this driver has 42 stops and he serves 49 meals. So it costs now, because of the efficiencies I tried to get, I was able to reduce the mileage, which reduced the fuel cost, but the meals served on this route is 49. The average total weekly meals served on this route is 943. The average monthly meals served on midtown route is 1,972, so it's now costing us $12,512.64 to provide service for this particular route only. And it's three, and it's a three-hour and 41-minute route, which is increased, which is too much for one driver to handle because it's in violation of our protocol with serving meals. So I did request some funds from the state to help provide for an additional driver to help with this route, but as you can see, we're running out of funds. So we might be having to come to the commission at some point in the near future to ask for money. So I stand for questions from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, on AAA, when you had to, those meals that weren't budgeted, why is it that AAA didn't budget it?
Because when we were trying to negotiate, and Leandro and I worked with them, we were trying to, it was really, it was like pulling teeth. We couldn't get a lot of stuff out of them. They were very hard to negotiate with in this part. But we at the time didn't know. This has been a learning process for me too. I've learned from then and now what this program entails. So we weren't really sure what we were getting into at that time, and we didn't really have a lot of numbers to go on. So-
Okay, let me ask this question now for fiscal year 214, 215. Are you gonna go back to AAA so they can increase it?
I did submit a $60,000 request from the state to help us, but I did that a couple of months ago, I haven't heard back from them. Okay?
Why, what do you figure, you think they'll come up with it or?
Well, they're probably waiting for the legislative session to see how. This was approved by AAA, I was able to work with them, and they understood that we were in need, but we don't know if we're gonna get it or not. I did also write a grant agreement to the town of Taos for $30,000. I submitted it on October 24th, but I haven't heard anything at this time. I don't know. I haven't heard anything back. I've sent a couple of emails to their manager, but I haven't heard back from him. So I don't know what the status is on that, on the town funds at this time.
Let me ask this question. When we took it over, kind of took it over, that the county provided money, wasn't the town gonna put some in at the same time, Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that's correct. At the time of, I guess, May timeframe, when we found out that basically the ancianos program was out of money, I had asked the town, I had asked AAA and the commission, obviously, to see what we could do to keep these meals going out to our constituents out in the community. I think Mike reported that in an earlier slide, that Taos County provided $12,000 worth of funding.
In June, to keep the center from closing.
Right, and then also AAA provided funding for that.
And the town never committed?
No, sir.
Or they never said they would help?
Well, the mayor's, the mayor's here. I mean, we had several conversations with the mayor and the town manager. I had asked for the money. At one point, they had requested that they give that money directly to the county. That would have taken me over my $20,000 threshold. I said no, that they needed to provide that directly to the ancianos program in order to keep that running. And so that's, that money never came through. That's what you're asking.
And Commissioner, when, let's see if I can back up and get everything straight here. When there was a problem with the way the money was going to be distributed to, we could distribute it in our audit, it would have been an audit finding because we could not, we could have given it government to government, we could have given it to the county, but we couldn't have given it to, what's the, no, not ancianos, because AAA, because it wasn't government to government. So our attorney and our finance people said we couldn't do that. So that's why we put the money under the, the project it is now that Mike applied for. And I'm trying to find out, I haven't seen the application, so I'm trying to find out right now. In fact, I'm emailing right now to find out-
I submitted it on October 24th, which was the deadline. I have a receipt that it was submitted, so I don't know what the status is. I did send Mr. Bellis an email on November 18th and also on November 26th, asking what the status was, but I haven't heard back from him.
Mr. Trujillo also, I believe he presented at the council?
I also presented at the council for funding, and that's when they advised me that I had to submit a application, which was a 42-page document that I submitted. So again, I guess our mayor's trying to find out, but I haven't heard back from him, so.
And Mr. Chair, that's the same application that most every nonprofit in town put in for, so-
Yes, sir.
I think there was $159,000 in that bucket that the town has, and I know the homeless shelter and lots of other nonprofits, CAV, have put in for that. And so I wish, I wish you luck on that one. So you decide-
There is $30,000 earmarked for him, so-
Oh, out of that?
But again, it just takes the paperwork to be, and I'm trying to find out right now.
Yeah, you're defining a unit as a household served?
Units are, for meals, each meal is considered a unit, okay? Each stop for, let's say, we take the seniors on a trip, let's say we take them to Roswell for their senior Olympics, okay? If we stop somewhere to give them, let them buy food or whatever, that's considered a unit.
Okay.
Okay? Same thing with our transportation, when we take people to Smith's here or to grocery shop, that's considered a unit. And if you notice on the graph, we've, our transportation has gone down a little, well, I didn't show it on this one, but because our home-delivered meals has gone down a little bit because we had some seniors that were at the living center, and then we had a, unfortunately, a few of our seniors passed away, so. But I haven't been able, I've kind of stopped trying to increase more services because we don't have the resources right now to do that. And I know we've had a lot of requests from seniors that need help in transportation, but I don't have the vehicles or the staff or the funds to really provide the service that is really needed.
So you're just maintaining the services that you can now?
Yes, sir.
But it's still greater service than it was-
Oh, yes, sir.
Under-
Yes, we've expanded our services, we've also had more efficiencies, and, I mean, you can only milk so much blood out of a turnip, you know, so.
Well, so you've got the 30, potential for 30,000 at the town, and is it 60 with AAA?
Hopefully, yes. With, actually, it'd be the legislature.
And that'd be through the legislature?
And just, and a projection that I made for food, for just the carriers for this, the rest of the fiscal year is like 56,000 that we need. Because the budget that we got for food last year was the same as, they gave, this fiscal year was the same last year as they, as they gave ancianos. So it was $87,000 and a dollar, which was, which covers kitchen supplies and food purchase, which isn't a lot of money.
So if you maintain services that you're providing today, what do you guess would be your annual budget going forward?
At this time, at the rate we're going and the rate, if we can, if we're gonna, it's obvious we're gonna increase services because we can't, we can only keep them on hold for a while. I'm looking at our budget being a million dollars next year.
And how mu-
Approximately a million dollars, just because, because it's $861,303 is our total budget, and that's including program income. And program income, you don't know what you're gonna get. I mean, that's, that number is just part of the budget, but we don't know if we're gonna get that amount.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. What's your best guess for, um, revenues coming in next year, not counting anything more from Taos County's general fund?
Well, the way it's gonna work next year is we're gonna be on direct services purchase. We're on expense purchase now, but next year, we're gonna be paid by every unit, we're supposed to be paid by every unit that we get. So if our units increase, let's say we get, let's say we have a contract of 87,000 units, okay, that we're contracted. If we go 10,000 over that unit, that's what we're supposed to get paid for, is the way direct purchase, direct purchase services works.
And will that, will, will the direct purchase services cover all of your costs?
No. It's, it's really hard to, because there's other unforeseen costs that we have.
Then what do you?
The problem that I've seen, that I've run into, and I think our seniors can attest to that, is our vehicles.
Yeah.
There's no budget to fix vehicles. There's no, I mean, I'm, I'm carrying seniors on vehicles that shouldn't even be on the road, you know? So, so...
So even for next year, you're, you're projecting a shortfall that the county's gonna have to make up? Do you have any guess as to that?
At this point, it's too early to tell. I'm trying to get numbers together to reflect that, but, but like I said, it's our first year, you know? Until the end of the year, I won't have a, a better handle on everything, because when we, when we worked the budget out, we used a lot of the things they had last year, but I'm starting to find out they're not, they weren't actually accurate numbers. And I know Leandro and his department have been working hard to try to assist us and try to do what they can to make sure that we stay afloat, but, but, um, we need to provide these services. There's a lot of seniors out there that need the help.
Let, let me ask this question. Are you planning to go lobby?
Well, I'm gonna go lobby for our senior program. The good thing is, is, is that we did get the general, the general obligation bond passed, okay? So we had 295,000 for vehicles, but we won't see that amount till August or Septem, I mean, September, October of next year. So between then and now, we still need vehicles. You know, the agreements won't come through for the general obligation bond that passed for 295,000 until then. We also have money for repairs of buildings and, and equipment, but that won't happen until September and October of next year. So in the meantime, we still have to operate, we still have to provide services, we still need equipment and vehicles, so. On a good note, we did receive, we did receive the, the, I was able to save the, actually, staff and I were able to save the federal rent that was lost by the, the nonprofit.
Yeah.
We were able to get that back, so we now have our senior companion and foster grandparents going full-time, so that was a plus.
Maybe you can work with, uh, Steve and Leandro to see about a loan pending the, uh, payments in, in late summer on the, on the bond? I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility, but...
Well, I know the county's strapped for money as it is, but, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult when, when entities such as ourselves rely so much on, on, on program income and, and, and the guessing of how we're gonna get money, because it's not an effective way to run government, you know?
No, I mean, I'm talking just about the geo-bonds right now for the, the vehicles, the capital.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, typically on that, we can't make any expenditures, so there's a grant agreement in front of us that'll completely execute it. So jumping the gun would probably cost us the reimbursement, so we wanna wait until we get that grant agreement in place.
Can we do internal loans that would then be secured by the bond?
Um, I don't think so. I will double-check on that, but I'm pretty sure that's not an allowable. Um, and just to kind of reiterate, I mean, we are working very closely with finance and Mr. Trujillo, we're constantly reminding him how tight things are, like if he doesn't know, he reminds me, I know about it, I'm keeping track. Um, the person that we hired specifically for that purpose, and it was a requirement of the AAA contract, is paid out of general fund as well. Just something else I wanted to point out.
That's another thing we had to do.
The county has really stepped up to take over this program. Um, the expenses that AAA increased us basically just covered personnel. And so that's where things are tight. The personnel and the food, the capital appropriations from the legislature will help tremendously, but it can't be used on food and it can't be used on personnel. So as greatly, you know, we'll be great to have them and we're welcoming them, but we still need to meet the day-to-day operational needs.
And I do want to thank our manager and our deputy manager, and our county staff, and especially our seniors who have been patient and have actually worked with us, and our staff from the program. We've, we've made a lot of sacrifices. I, just for example, I, I work from, I mean, I work till 10 o'clock at night sometimes, most of the time, to try to get these things done and make sure we get stuff. I go to the kitchen, I help cook, I help clean, I help wash dishes, I do whatever, I clean bathrooms, I do whatever it takes. But, you know, the job's gotta get done, but the bottom line still unfortunately comes down to funding. You know, we can only do so much.
Let me ask this question, uh, this is probably from Mr. Malone. Mr. Malone, on the Taos County ordinance, the one that we approved, the Holigo County grocery seat, can some of that money be used to help them out?
Absolutely. It wouldn't be available until starting July 1.
Okay. But it can't have...
That's something to look forward to. But we're trying. We're really, we, commissioners, uh, audience, we really are trying. We're trying to make a difference, um, and our staff here, our seniors here can attest to the changes that we've made for the better, I hope.
Yes.
And, and, you know, I...
Before we move on to the, our, our folks in the audience, Commissioner Sanchez?
I have, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also, thank you, uh, the Ancianos for being here today. Um, I got three things here, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you say, uh, Mr. Draper, Bob Draper, Phoenix Mechanical, he repaired the freezer at no cost. Did we get him a certificate?
I, I went and thanked him personally. We haven't gotten him a certificate. I'd like to, I haven't, like I say, I haven't had time, this place, you know, to give you, to be honest with you, out of every department that I manage in the county, this has got to be the most difficult, but the most rewarding. This, this program really does keep you on your toes.
And then also, Mike, um, the building, we've been repairing the building, uh, and we're paying for it. Isn't that the town of Taos building?
Well, on the, on the day-to-day repairs, the county does absorb the cost, but we did get the building roof fixed. Um, again, that was a gen, that was a general obligation bond that I was able to amend to, to move money from equipment and other things that weren't a priority, because if the roof leaks, you can't use a building. So we use that money to do the mold remediation and to fix the roof. And now they're actually fixing the inside of the building. They started today to repair the, where the mold, where they removed the mold, they're redoing the walls there now, so. So progress is being made on the building. I'm, I did meet, when I met with the town the last time, we did discuss a possibility of the transfer of the building to the county and, uh, or an agreement that, again, I haven't heard anything back, so that's something you might want to look at, Mr. Mayor?
Don't we have a...
I'm gonna let you put on your mayor's shoes now, and, but, you know, I, I have no control over that, so.
And currently, the building is allowed for you guys' use at no charge.
And that, and that's fine.
And that's, that's the way it's been, and that's, I mean, it's there for you guys to use. The town did, uh, I believe, turn over, uh, I can't remember the amount of money to fix the building that was in the town coffers that was, that came to us.
Actually, actually, that was a general obligation, that was a general obligation bond.
Came to the town and the town gave to you guys.
You guys were the original, the original grantees.
Right. To fix the building. So the town, that was town money.
So then another thing here, Mike, uh, we're a nonprofit. Seems like we have to be competing for this when we're not a nonprofit, you know? I don't understand that.
On the funds from the town?
Yeah.
Again, it's just the process that they set aside so that, because of the audit findings, so every entity that comes to the town for money, that's the process that the council put in place, not the mayor, the council put in place. So any entity, there is, again, $30,000 that was set aside, that was just waiting on paperwork. I'm trying to figure out why we haven't got that processed. The other thing that I do have a question to Mike.
Yes, sir.
When we sat here, all of us, in front of AAA, AAA said that they would fund this program if the county would take it over in its entirety, that they would make this program whole. How come we're not holding their feet to the fire?
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, first of all, I wasn't a part of that meeting because I, I took over the transition in February. This process started in November, so I wasn't part of the transition until February, so I, I really can't answer that question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we did. County staff went down and have met with AAA on numerous occasions initially, to be honest with the commission. Uh, the AAA had come back and said that they would give us a little bit over $900,000 in order to run the Ancianos program, which would be enough to run the, the complete program. Uh, when we submitted our budget, we were basically cut back to about $728,000 by AAA. At that point, we came back to the commission, reported back to the commission, let them know that it was at 728. We went back to AAA, uh, the chairman also met with them because he sits on the board, and we basically told them that we couldn't run the program for that amount of money, and we couldn't supplement it at a range of about $200,000. AAA then came back with the actual budget that we have in place, which is about 800, Leandro, 827?
No, 800, the actual budget that AAA gave us was 700.
Well, it's, it's right around, right around 800,000. And so what we did was, again, as, as Mr. Cordovan, Mr. Trujillo have stated, we absorbed a lot of those funds. We were gonna get a position that was gonna be a financial position, uh, that would be placed in finance. That position never came through. We had to cut that out, so finance absorbed, uh, that. Uh, there was a lot of equipment, again, vehicles, uh, vehicles with no tires, vehicles with tires that we couldn't put on the road. Uh, Taos County again absorbed those. So we've made every cut that we've been able to, to cut, Commissioner Broni, in every level that we can. We've been trying to find efficiencies. We look at the program on a day-to-day basis. Um, and then the other thing is that our seniors are becoming seniors on a daily basis. And so as Mike is showing you here, basically, we're going from, you know, 400, 400 meals to 480 meals over a six-month period, just because, again, and I don't, I, you know, I'm just making up those numbers. He gave you the exact numbers on that, because people are turning of age and, and qualified for the program. We also have more elderly people that are now homebound. And so, you know, we're trying not to turn our back on them and actually trying to get meals out to them, uh, come rain, sun, or, or snow. So, you know, Taos County has really done everything that we can, but in reality, on some level, we need some help. We need, we do need some help. I mean, we're, we're already halfway into the fiscal year, uh, now in December. We're still waiting on grant funding from the town. We're still going back to AAA. In fact, on Friday, we're gonna go back and meet with them again, ask them, you know, what can you do? How else can you help us through this process? Because it's not for Taos County. It's not for us. It's for our constituents, it's for our elderly people within our community, and that's what we're striving to do every day.
So Steve, basically then, the process hasn't caught up to itself, is that correct? Because when we, when, when AAA was sitting here and there was X amount of FTEs or whatever you, uh, clients, they're, they're basing their, their budget on how many people apply for the program. Is that correct?
They're basing their budget, Commissioner, on past years.
Right. So basically, now we have an increase of those, of, of FTEs, if we want to call them that.
We have an increase, and we also had a shortfall from the very beginning. That's correct.
Right. So, so, so then, as we apply with more FTEs, more money should come in, but it takes a lag. There's a lag in that, in a year's lag or a year and a half's lag in time, so hopefully that'll catch up, is that...
If, if there's more monies in the coffers, and that's the, that's the issue, as Mike said. During the legislative session, if those monies come available to AAA, then those monies will be filtered down to all the programs across the state. But as we heard yesterday with the senator and the representative, basically, look at the gas prices. They've dropped, you know? Instead of $3.40, they're now $2.60. And so the reality is that money's not coming into the state coffers, and there's a big drop in those coffers, which means there's gonna be a drop in the amount of money that's gonna be going out to the local communities. And, and that's where it's tough. That's where it's tough. We, we try to base our budget, you know? At home, we get a paycheck every, every month, and we know what's coming in. In the county, we don't know how many people are gonna buy gas. We don't know how many people are gonna buy groceries and grocery seats tax, so we have to estimate what those things are, but we can't control the gas prices either, which makes it difficult. Then the state doesn't get that money, the state can't pass out that money to the different entities. And, and that's what makes it very difficult to continue these, these processes moving forward. And as Mike was stating, I mean, our estimate for right now, for 2015, 2016, is that this program's probably gonna grow to about a million-dollar program. And, you know, if we get the same amount of money, we're gonna have about a $300,000 shortfall. If we get a little bit more, it will be better, but if we get less, we're gonna have even a bigger shortfall.
And the conditions of those vehicles, uh, you said there's seven of them down?
Yeah, they need, they need engine work, they need tires, they need, uh, tune-ups. It's a combination of a lot of things. We fixed a few to be able to keep them going, and, and Leandro and, and Amanda has, has worked with me trying to find money to get these fixed, but, I mean, we're, we're, we're limited, you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just kind of, we took over a failing business, essentially. We looked, and they based our budget on one of the worst years that they had. And then the year before that wasn't much better, and the year before that wasn't much better. We came in with zero inventory, like Mr. Trujillo mentioned, so right up front, we spent most of our money just to get the food we need to start serving meals. We now have the backup and the evidence that we need to go back and ask for that million that we do believe it's gonna cost to run it. So next year, yes, we're gonna ask for more. We certainly are gonna go to AAA and explain to him, we now have the numbers to prove that we're increasing our service, we're finding the efficiencies, but it's still costing more than you gave us.
And so are you finding that support there from AAA?
All right. Bye.
Well, on this last, um, request for funds that I did, they were very supportive because we did have a meeting here with them. I met with them, and I, I told them, these are the numbers, we're short, this is what we need. And they actually agreed with me, and they, they submitted my request to the legislature. You know, they, they worked with me, and we put this project together, and it came out to 61,000, approximately $61,000 that I've asked for them to help us carry us through the year. So, and that's, you know, and, and that's based on, on their numbers, because the state and federal numbers are a little less than the actual numbers, because it's only includes state and federal. So it costs $5.17 to them for congregant meals. To us, it costs $8, because we use program, we use everything else. So the actual cost is $8.88 for congregant meals. It's $9.12 for, 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 uh, home, home-delivered meals. But their cost is $7.41, so they're basing their numbers based on the federal levels that they're, that they use. But in all actuality, the actual costs are more than what they give us.
Are, are you including tires and repairs in the $9?
Everything, everything that's in there.
Okay, so some of that'll be made up by the bond?
Uh, next year, yes, we, well, and then towards the end of the year, when we get the agreement and the bond in place, and we should be able to get better vehicles and, and maybe auction some of these other ones off to buy another vehicle or something, or use it for equipment that we need.
So it's at least possible that the bond will bring your numbers back down closer to AAA's, you know, nine down to seven, and that, then the AAA actually will live up to their word. I mean, that's still a possibility. Uh, when are you gonna find out whether you'll get the 61?
I've had some calls, I haven't heard back from them, but not probably till after the session ends. So, you know, that's gonna be a two-month session, probably not till March, the end of the session, so.
How much is the bond?
The actual bond for vehicles, the total amount that we got was 588,000, $588,000, something like that, 588.
That should set the fleet, that should set the fleet right, then?
Well, the vehicle, the vehicle amount was 295,000, and that's to purchase seven vehicles.
Okay.
But we still need to purchase, because we're running meals on wheels with vans instead of the meals-on-wheels trucks, the actual trucks that are made for that. So, we're going to plan on ordering at least three of those vehicles, and then what's left, we'll order a couple of other vehicles with that 295,000.
Is there any funding in recurring years from that bond, or is it just a one-time deal?
It's a, it's a one-time shot. The good thing, another, well, see, general obligation bonds take two years, okay, to even get funding. What I'm going to do this now in March is I'm submitting a capital outlay request. And what I'm going to do in that capital outlay request is submit for more vehicles, more equipment, more building repairs, but we won't see that till the next bond comes in place two years later. It's always that, it's always behind, you know?
Right. But we're getting closer.
Well, we're trying, you know? I mean, it's a good program. It's a great program. I think it's important, and we're doing, and like I say, we're doing what we can at this time to ensure that we provide those services. But still, we're at a now situation, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Does that mean I told you so? Is that what you said? Does that mean I told you so? Is that what that meant?
Where can you get five legs out of a cat? You can't. I haven't got food.
Go ahead and come forward, Mr., and state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Del Martinez, and I'm a participant, and I've been there for several years. I've done a lot of help there on my own, and I've seen Mike come in and do a great job, and that is why we're having some of these problems, because he's doing too good of a good job, and there's a lot of people coming in, new people, I would say, probably 20 percent. And all the people that go there are very well-satisfied. They're proud of the folks. They're proud of Mike. We're proud of them, a whole bunch, and he's doing a hell of a job. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I ran into Mr. Trujillo a little earlier today, so he's heard what I'm about to say. I think you should maintain the word, the term ancianos. Taos County or Taos Seniors Program is such a dry bureaucratic term, and I understand that the word is a term of respect. It's not, literally, I think it means ancient, or ancient ones, or the elderly. So, I don't think that you should abandon it. You can say ancianos, Taos seniors, but don't give up that term, just as you don't abandon people, individuals, you don't abandon a term of respect. Mike said that he wanted to disassociate the term, maybe not use it for a while because of the problems with the program, but when I think ancianos, I think people. I don't think of programs. I literally do. I don't, when I hear ancianos, I don't think, oh, that's the program that went bad. I think about the people there that you're serving. So, don't give up on the term. The loss of language is the first term, is the first step in loss of culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay.
And I did mention to this gentleman that at some point, after we get over the first year's hump of managing the program, that we would come before you and ask you to adopt the name, the Taos County Anciano Senior Center, you know, but I told him, give us a chance to get this program strained out, to ensure that, because when we apply for funding, and we use ancianos incorporated, a lot of our funders try away, you know, because of that, problems that they had, especially the ALSI Legislative Finance Committee, you know? So, in the meantime, that's what we're doing, and then hopefully, we can go back to what we were before.
Select the use of the term. Like them, like. It's a little more than that. Thanks very much, Mike. Steve, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to item 10, Department Matters, item B, Request Consideration, An Approval of Job Descriptions for the E-911 staff. Ms. Renee Weber, welcome. Hadn't seen you in a while.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Manager, and Members of the Board. I bring before you today the E-911 job descriptions. We worked pretty hard on these job descriptions to try to get them in line with mostly what the town currently had for their employees, but also to bring them current with what the county would like to see. We currently have 11 slots available. 10 of those are going to be employees that'll be moving from the town to the county with one vacancy, and that would be at the communications trainee level. The pay grades have been assigned based largely on what the town of Taos had, taking into consideration a tiny, tiny bit of wiggle room, if you will, for the employees, and that considerably wouldn't even be, it's less than 5 percent across the board. So, currently, the communications trainee starts at a pay grade nine. That is the entry-level position. That position would, has a range that varies from 1207 to 1735. Communication Specialist One, which is the next level up after they become certified, would be a pay grade 11. That is the range of 1304 to 1872. Communication Specialist Two, pay grade 12. That is 1355 to 1944. Communication Specialist Three, pay grade 14. That is 1464 to 2097. Those are the max ranges. Communication Supervisor, pay grade 19. The range is 1777 to 2535. And the Emergency Communications Director is currently slotted at an exempt Level 5, with pay range beginning at 2718 to a max of 3845.
Questions, Chairman, Renee? So, all these positions are going to come in at what pay rate?
They won't be losing any of the pay that they currently have. I do have the current figures for them, and I believe what we're bringing them over is probably anywhere from 13 cents, and on the lowest end of the trainee, I believe it's a $1.22 increase.
So, when you said 13 to 18, they're more or less coming in at $14, or?
No, sir. The communications trainee, of which there are currently three, they are currently making 1085 an hour at the town. They will be starting with the county at a pay grade nine at 1207. A little bit higher. And we did that because we understand that it is hard to draw and keep your E-911 staff. Once you get them trained, you need to do what you can to keep them.
So, now, so now what you're saying is they're getting a $3 raise, so they got to do a little bit more work, right?
Of course, of course.
And Renee, is there a difference between the benefit package? Is that what really drove this?
There is a difference between the benefit package. The towns' contributions are less to para, and the counties are higher. That is about 5 percent difference. So, those employees will be taking home less if we were to leave them at their current rate of pay.
They tend to lack that.
No, sir.
So, these individuals will become Taos County employees, then?
Yes.
After, but they're on a probation period, right?
Yes, they will serve a six-month probation period.
And I believe they will become actually Taos County employees on December 19th. Is that correct?
December 20th.
December 20th.
Although they physically will be housed here sooner.
Just to alert the Commission, as you've noticed, the activity outside, basically, the 911, as of right now, is over in Red River, and we have staff in Red River, and the town has staff in Red River actually handling those calls. We have moved over the majority of the equipment, and they're in the process of going live at 3 o'clock, 3 a.m. this, in the morning, tomorrow morning. And so we'll be working throughout the night, and at 3 a.m., we'll actually go live with that. So, staff is moving in, equipment's being put in. They've done all the second checks on the circuit breakers and everything. Everything seems to be checking out. We have good connection with the repeater sites, and at 3 a.m. on Wednesday morning, we will be going live, which is about probably 12 hours from right now.
And the town staff is helping with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that's good.
Yes.
Actually, they'll be taking home less money.
They will be taking home less.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do these, these pay grades that we're approving fit within the earlier budget estimates, or come close to what we have been paying in the past? In other words, it's about 600 grand a year, I think, for operational, was the estimates?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, I was able to get some numbers from the town to take a look at the current year-to-date. Looks like we are on track to go ahead and meet the budget as in place. The only line item that was a little high was overtime, but I think if they're fully staffed and they come over here, we can go ahead and get that under control by the end. We will see some savings in the budget. We're not paying rent for the next six months, so we'll see some savings right off the bat from that. But Ms. Weber did take a look at what we proposed from the beginning of the year, and went and got some information from the town to go ahead and make this proposal.
Mr. Cordova, I also would like you to add that we're not charging a fiscal agent fee also.
And yes, we're not charging a fiscal agent fee, but the town isn't charging it this year to us either. So, I'll make that clear. They stopped that practice as of July 1, so we're only paying rent at Carson at this time.
Great. Good job. Thank you.
Do you need approval on this?
And again, Alejandro, I think the town is also working with you as far as to make sure that there's some monies for startup. The town has, I think, not used the money for November, basically left it in your funds so that you have some money to get going, and same thing with October. So, I think there's been very good collaboration lately with this move.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, we've been able to work closely with, in order to cash flow this move, and make sure that everything was in neat. We've been incurring expenses under 911 for the last few weeks already, and they haven't even been here, but we've been incurring expenses under their operating budget that the county has established. So, we're working to ensure that the fund balance comes over in a smooth transition as well, and all that money will stay with the JPA, and it's not county money, it's not town money, it's JPA's money. And that's what we're trying to finalize at this point, but things have been working pretty smoothly.
So, is there no decision?
They need approval, actually, I believe.
Yes, request for approval.
Second. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll move on to Budget Matters, item 11.
Thank you.
Item A, Budget Adjustment, Senior Program, Mr. Leandro Cordova.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is, as mentioned a little earlier in the presentation, one of our attempts to squeeze some money out of some of the line items at the senior program, as well as taking over the operations. We take over some of the liabilities we weren't necessarily aware of until we were in the building and we're there, and one of those was the Xerox machine. There was an agreement between ancianos and AAA for a Xerox machine, where AAA paid the entire amount for one year, and then ancianos was expected to pay from there on out. Since last year, they didn't pay it. We didn't budget for it, so now we have to. So, what we're doing is increasing a line item for the Xerox contract, and we're taking it out of other contractual services, and the amount's $900, and I do recommend approval.
Now, their $900 bucks. So, move.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vice.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Leandro, item B, Budget Adjustments, All Waste Operations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the end of the budget year last year, we had a truck in the shop, basically, and it was a major overhaul of that particular truck. Fortunately, we didn't receive the final invoice for that until the new budget year, and therefore, we encouraged some of those expenses in the new budget year, which has wiped out the maintenance of vehicle line item. In order to get through the rest of the year, we wanted to add $12,000 to that line item. We're taking it out of buildings and structures, which had an original budget balance of $17,000, and it was intended for the transfer stations to provide some kind of more of a stable building and structure for them. After discussions with Mr. Martinez, he feels that having $5,000 left in that line item, we'll be able to take them through the year and make any improvements or emergency improvements that may be needed.
How much was the overhaul on that truck?
I'm going to let Mr. Martinez address that.
14.
14.
Yeah, there was about 14,000 that was needed to finish repairing that truck.
But of what, like what repairs?
Some of the repairs were, the flywheel, some of the bolts got sheared off, so they had to replace the whole flywheel because they couldn't extract the bolts from it. So, there was a flywheel, there was some engine work, and...
Yeah, but like what kind of engine?
The manifolds, I, the, not the manifolds, yeah, the exhaust manifolds. They were actually, some of them were, had warped on there. And the pistons, I mean, I've got all the paperwork. They did quite an extensive amount of work on it. They had to take off, you know, get into the engine, they had to take off the block, I mean, the oil pan, the block, and so they had to do quite a bit of work to it.
Who did this work? 12,000?
Peterbilt. Rush truck centers.
No, I'm not a commissioner. I could have done that job for half the price. Oh, really? And they took you for a ride. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, the truck was in pretty bad condition. I mean, they had a lot of work to do. I don't have all that paperwork in front of me that I, you know, I wasn't prepared for this, but I mean, I could get all that paperwork and tell you, you know, exactly, exactly what all the work that they did to it. I mean, because it was quite a bit of extensive work, you know?
So, you need what, $12,000 to pay that off?
Yes. We want to move 12,000 in there just for any other potential. At this time, there's about 500 bucks left in the line item, and so we want to have some money in there in case something should happen. With the new roll-offs and with all the work that was done to this particular truck, the maintenance costs have gone down, and we've seen a lower level of expenditures because of new trucks and the work that's been done. So, we may not expend this 12,000, but we want to make sure it's there if it should be needed to keep the trucks on the road.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second. A discussion? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think this is something that's much needed now, you know, so we need, we need the money to get you guys going, so, and maybe down the road, Commissioner Duran, maybe we could find out, get an estimate.
Yes, sir, because right now, I mean, we do need some oil changes on some of our trucks. On one of our backup trucks, we do need a fuel pump for it. We are working, I've been, one of our other trucks, I've been, you know, wanting to work with the town of Taos to trade the landfill for a baler that they have, and they need a, our old roll-off that is our oldest truck we had, that's really not to be out on the road, which would benefit the landfill, because they could move bins around the landfill to empty out their bins, which we do for them once in a while. When we have time, they'll ask us if we can move, empty some of their bins. So, with, if they, you know, turning the truck over to them would be a big benefit for the landfill.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also just want to note that this is not coming out of general fund. This is all coming within their own budget of where they've made cuts in order to make the move over.
So, there has been a motion made, a seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Dugan?
No?
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 11C, Budget Adjustment, Lodger's Tax Promotional Fund. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this final budget adjustment is for the Lodger's Tax Promotional Fund. Between the preliminary and the final budget, we did not increase the amount that we actually gave away to our sub-grantees. So, the purpose of this budget adjustment is to increase the grants to the sub-receipients by $3,500. We're taking it out of a supply line item, and the total amount then will equal 93,500, which is what we actually gave away through the Lodger's Tax process this year.
Oh, you're taking out, how much, 300?
This was a finance boo-boo. We did not carry from the preliminary to the final the correct number, and now we're fixing the mistake in that line item.
So, move. I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners report?
Commission report, item A, List of Attendees at the NACO Legislative Conference on Actual Reimbursement, February 21st through the 25th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually do have a list of the attendees to the NACO Legislative Conference. It will be all the Commissioners except for the new Commissioner-elect, Candace O'Donnell. Everybody else will be attending, and so the request today is to actually pay actual reimbursements for that. The cost in Washington is much steeper than what our local costs are, and for that, we're asking for actual reimbursements for the people who attend the conference.
So, move for approval. I think they need it going, and I do have, I don't believe they pay for taxi fares. I don't think that can be done within, and so you might just want to know and let the people going know that, because sometimes you can run up a taxi bill in a hurry, and that's something that's not paid for. As Mr. Cordova knows, there'll be a big audit finding.
It hasn't been paid in the past? Has it been paid in, really?[1784.83]
that's something that's not paid for. As Mr. Cordova knows, there'll be a big audit finding.
It hasn't been paid in the past? Has it been paid in?
Should be.
Really?
On the taxi?
Yeah.
We had.
Yeah.
We had gotten paid.
I'll second.
Even though they took us around the block, the same block, four times.
Okay, you didn't need a vote or anything else?
Yes, they actually need to vote on it.
Okay, there was a motion, and?
Second.
Seconded. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, and that is it?
That's it.
Did you want to talk about the calendar at all, Steve, or you can't?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we passed out the calendar with the changes for the actual holiday schedule, which you'll see on there, and so that's the December calendar that's in front of you. Okay. And December 4th is not applicable on the calendar. That has been put off till after the 1st of the year. And then on the 19th, we do have a joint Christmas party between the town and the county. Again, just want to make sure the staff here is aware, and we're hoping they'll, I think, and it's between 11:00 and 2:00 o'clock. I think it could be fun, I think, you know, people intermingling and just learning that there's two governments and we can work together.
You're going to be cooking?
I will.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, one question for the manager. On the, you got that Better and Foreman Public Officials Conference, 9, 10, and 11. Is there, on the 8th, is anybody going to be up there, let's say with the Capitol, you know, let's say, you know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Sanchez, this month is a very busy month for the Senators and Representatives at the Capitol. My understanding from Senator Sisnetos, and speaking with him yesterday, is that the month of December, they'll pretty much be in their offices at the Capitol. So if you're wanting to visit or go by and see them, that would be a good opportunity anytime in the month of December.
Thank you, Mr. Trueta.
Okay, motion for adjournment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Because I'm a lame duck.
Second.
Whack.
No whack. Yes.
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 I don't need any of this stuff anymore.
That's it.
Getting close.